President, every radiant governor, Senator Marcos. You should be Secretary of Tourism, you know. In the future, when you retired from the Senate.
Lousy job po, lousy job.
Lousy job? I went through that. As Secretary of Love, she has a lousy job. I think she loves it. Alright, uh. Are there any other senators present?
Ms. Sherwin, Charlene. Hi, Nancy.
Claire, are you there, Claire? Charlene.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, never mind the presentations. Let's go ahead and move forward. Yes, Charlene. I'm running to stay in place, you know. So that matter of fact, I'm running to stay in place. I think. A good friend, Senator Marcos knows where I'm at right now. I'm between heaven and hell. And I'm happy. Although the work keeps piling up. Charlene, do you have any other senators present? If not, I'm glad. I would not wait for.
Senator Gachalian and Senator Bina.
Senator Gachalian is there? And Senator Bina?
Oh, there we go.
Yes.
Welcome, Senator Gachalian. Welcome, Senator Gachalian. Sandra Nguyen, are you there? Or I'll call Joey Villanueva.
I'm here, Chairman, I'm here.
Okay, good. Just kidding, just kidding. Thank you for attending the meeting. Alright, this is a very crucial meeting at our country's history because tourism, as you all know, is the principal engine of growth. I authored this bill and we wanted to make sure that tourism gets the support that the government should be giving it because. If you will recall, when I was Secretary of Tourism, I used to have a track, assure, and make sure that we're able to, you know, generate the necessary capability to make sure that we can develop tourism for our people. That's what it's all for. You know, remember, work tourism advances, power tourism retreats. That's one of my slogans at that time. And therefore, try to remember that those are the fundamental principles. You know, that we must make sure that we have. That we have to protect our natural endowments. I'm doing this extemporaneously, as you can see. I can do this in my sleep. You can protect the environment. You can make sure that you are able to preserve the environment and make sure that you can profit from the environment. So we are all natural. I'm sure, you know, all my fellow senators agree with that statement. We're all natural as a tourism, you know, destination. And so, without much to do, I'd like to have the secretary make the presentation, please. I have another set of departments that I have to handle this afternoon. Tomorrow, I have the dreaded Blue Ribbon Committee meeting.
Thank you, Senator Gordon. Honorable members of the Senate, good afternoon. On behalf of all the DOT officials and staff, we would like to express our sincere gratitude for your unwavering support to the Department of Tourism's plans and programs. The help of Congress for the industry cannot be overemphasized as we always look up to both houses for the support to our budget, policies, programs, and opportunities to further develop our sector. Without a doubt, tourism has been one of the hardest-hit industries by this pandemic. According to the United Nations World Tourism Organization, global tourism in 2020 suffered its worst year on record with international arrivals declining by a staggering seventy-three percent, which translates to approximately one billion fewer arrivals compared to the previous year. Despite the challenges and limitations in both 2020 and 2021, the DOT has been relentless in its efforts to.
Pardon me.
Yes, yes.
Show that. We usually have a slide in the Department of.
Yes, we have, um.
Overview of the International Business of Tourism. Do we have that?
We do. Um, I think we were supposed to have that slide. Showing the.
Alang tanas ang you used to be able to do that very well. And may I? Maybe you should introduce first, pardon me, you should introduce the folks at the Tourism Department.
Okay.
Under the Marini, under secretaries.
Yes, let me, let me look for, um, for them.
Mister Enrile, are you there?
Yes.
Yes, sir. Good afternoon, sir, Senator.
Hand so I can see you, please.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you, Mister Enrile. Go ahead, Secretary.
Yeah, okay. Should I introduce Senator or the?
Go ahead, go ahead.
Executive members, yeah. Okay, we have Yusek Edwin Enrile. We also have, right now, COO of the Tourism Promotions Board, Antonet Velasco Iones.
When your name is called, kindly raise your hand and say, say your name. Para makikita ko, because I love to take a look at it. And tell me, Chusek, are you with? What is your position? Go ahead.
Good afternoon, sir, Antonet Velasco Iones po of the Tourism Promotions Board.
You're the TPB. You replaced, who did you replace? Venus Tan?
Venus or?
Yeah, Venus. I thought you were from Mars. Alright, okay, go ahead.
And then we have with us, um. Okay, I'll go per row. We have Vico Angala of the Duty Free.
Can I see him? Mister Angala.
Sir, good afternoon, sir. COO Vico Angala, Duty Free Philippines Corporation.
See you now. Okay, thank you, Vico. Go ahead.
Yes. We have, um. We have Asek Howard Uiking.
Howard. Uiking?
Yes. We have Acting Secretary Chris Morales.
Chris?
Morales.
Good afternoon, sir. Oh, I see Asek for Opoli Kasyon, sir.
Yes.
That's a nice beard you have, Chris. Go ahead.
And then we have Yusek Mayra.
Or Arab?
Yusek Mayra Paz.
I'm gonna start this, Senator and everybody else. Good afternoon, each and everyone. Asalamualaikum.
Paz Valderosa, you are.
Senator Gordon.
Asalamualaikum.
Mayra Paz. Salam, Senator po.
Yeah. Pa ba'y na ba'ngayang pangalan mo sa salamualaikum. Paz, which means peace.
Peace, yes, Senator.
Peace be with you. Okay, who's next?
We have Asek Rica Bueno.
Asek Rica Bueno.
Good afternoon, Senator. Good afternoon, Secretary.
Asek Maria Rica Bueno.
Yes, sir.
Which Asek are you handling? Which?
KRCRG.
Portfolio.
Yes, sir. Particularly on human capital development, sir.
Human capital development.
Training.
And of course, you tried to avoid human trafficking because that's a curse upon tourism, right?
Yes, sir. We're very active po sa Yakat, the DOT.
I know, I know. You should be. Go ahead.
Yes, we have Acting Yusek Verna Buenos Seso.
Verna Buenos Seso. Are you related to Ambassador Buenos Seso? Where are you, Verna?
Hi, sir. Well, her families are related through my husband, sir.
Oh, Verna, I've not forgotten you. You're still around. Thank you. You've not changed, except for the glasses. They're bigger. Okay. Good success to you, Verna. That's your husband pala? You're related to Verna Seso, is the brother of the ambassador?
Our families are both from Bataan, sir.
Bataan, okay, good. Okay, go ahead. Sige, next.
And then we have Yusek Robbie Alabado.
Light a bit, para di tayo tense. Ako tense na eh. Go ahead, please.
We have Yusek Robbie Alabado.
Yes, good afternoon, Senator. Good afternoon, Secretary.
Pardon me, I cannot see you. What's your name again?
Robert Robbie Alabado.
They call you Bob? Bob Three?
Robbie Nagampor, Robbie.
Robbie, oh, pinabago, pinaganda pa. Robbie.
Roberto po.
Robbie, sige, thank you. Ano hawak mo? Yusek?
I'm right now.
Special concerns, what?
Special concerns po.
Oh, si mo? I can read your mind. Wala na 'yung lang, special concerns lang. 'Yung ordinary concerns, wala.
Actually, pang, ang hawak ko po ngayon is 'yung health and wellness po. It's a very interesting program right now.
Can you come closer to the microphone so I can understand you and speak with authority and firmness? Go ahead.
Yes, good afternoon, Senator. I'm now looking at the health and wellness sectors.
Oh, great.
Very exciting.
'Yun 'yung mga san binito, ano? San malay. Go ahead.
Yes, po.
Yeah, sige.
We have Administrator Gilia Asidov Intramuros.
Gilia is very famous to me. He's a good man. He'll work you very well.
Very good man.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair.
Hi, Gilia. We've known each other for a long time, and I'm proud of you. Go ahead. Next, please.
Yeah, we have Executive Director Ceci Lorenzana Romero of the National Parks Development Corporation.
Ceci Lorenzana Romero, where are you?
Hello, good afternoon, Senator.
Cecil, where are you? Raise your hand, please. I can see you. And push the button for you. Ah, there you go, Cecil.
Yes, good afternoon, Senators.
Yes, how long have you occupied this? Are you new or two years, three years?
Uh, two years, Senator.
Right, right. Okay, sige. Quite right. Go ahead, next.
Oo. We also have with us Executive Director Gertrie Duran Batokabe.
Sorry, sini?
Gertrie Batokabe.
Jersey?
Gertrie Duran Batokabe, her true des.
Show yourself, Jersey? You don't have to wear a jersey. Just show yourself.
Senator, if you probably know her late husband. Her late husband was Congressman Rodel Batokabe.
Ah, the one from Bicol, no?
Yes, from Bicol.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, sir.
Uh, you the widow or?
Widow.
Really, I'm sorry about that. I spoke very strongly against the killers of your husband and have you found the killers yet?
Uh, yes, sir. Still out on bail.
Excuse me, Gertrie? Sorry?
Sadly, out on bail po.
Di pa nahuhul.
They're still out on bail po.
Ah, out on bail, so nahuli pero.
Nahuli na, but.
Yeah, that's a, that's hardly a crime that has ever been forgotten. Thank you. Go ahead, please.
Um, we have, um, Acting OIC Yusek Ray Ching. I think you know him, Senator. Ray Ching?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Reynaldo Ching. Asek Reynaldo Ching, sir.
Reynaldo Ching, there you go. Of course, right. Oh, mahaba pa rin 'yung buhok mo ang gano'n. Sige, Secretary of Tourism ka na. Sige, thank you. Under Secretary ka na. Go ahead.
Yes, we have Assistant Secretary Mila Milagrosai.
Iula? Milagros?
Milagrosai, yes.
Ah, wala sa lista. Si Mila?
Mila, Mila Sai, yes.
Ah, she's Assistant Secretary?
Yes, acting.
Oh, about time. Mila. Where are you, Mila? I wanna see your face. From the last time I saw your face to the first time I saw your face. Mila, are you there? Mila, I always call you from time to time when I was Secretary of Tourism. Mila, are you there?
Yes po, nandito po ako.
Don't be crying out in the wilderness, Mila. Good to see you, Mila. Are you at home?
Yes. Yes po, Senator. Yes po, yes.
Wonderful. You have a lot of say in the Department of Tourism. Go ahead.
Then we have all our Regional Directors with us.
Oh, sige. I'd love to see them. Go ahead. Regional, Region One?
For Region One.
Ilocos, Slovakia?
Yes, we have Jeff Ortega.
You're related to the Ula Unyang Ortegas? Yes, are you there?
Yes, po, Mr. Chairman. Good afternoon, Senator Marcos, sir.
Yeah, you look like an Ortega, right? I was just talking to your uncle, Vic Ortega, last night.
Yes, po.
Wait, go ahead.
He's the youngest brother of Governor Pakoy.
Of who?
Uh, he's the youngest brother of the governor.
Oh, yes.
Yes, yes. We have Region Two, Fanny Beth.
Who's this?
Good afternoon, Mr. Senator.
Fanny Beth Domingo.
You know?
Region Two, Fanny Beth Domingo.
Fanny Domingo, you have Viscaya and Kagayan. He replaced.
Tanes Isabella po, Senator. Good afternoon po.
You know, we were there for Roli and we took out all the mud on the peanut farm so that they can plant again. And they were able.
Yes, Mr. Senator. Thank you so much.
Thank you, you're welcome.
Uh, for Region Three, we have Carol, Carol Uy, Carolina Uy.
Carolina Uy. Good afternoon, Mr. Uiking. Carolina Uy Queen.
Carol here, RD, Region Three.
Are you from Region Three originally, Carol?
Yes, Senator. I'm from Nueva Ecija, the province.
Great, wonderful. Agricultural country. Go ahead. Next, please.
For Calabarzon, we have RD Mike Angara Palispis.
Calabarzon. Where are you? Where's Calabarzon? What's her name?
RD Mike Angara Palispis.
Mark Angara? You don't happen to be related to a certain Angara in the Senate, are you? Is he, is he?
Yes, he is.
That's why he thinks he cannot show up here? Ano ba 'yan?
No, no, he's probably, ano, the signal, but he's here, he's here, Senator.
Anak maniguan 'yan? Anak ni Congressman Angara?
Um, no, 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 ano, no, not, not, not the son.
Not related to the Angaras?
He's related, but he's, I'm not sure how he's related, but he's from Balera Aurora also.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, the hometown of the Kason.
Yes.
That's right. Well, can you ask him to show up so we can see him so?
Yes.
In the future, we can see him also. Next, please.
I'm sorry, we have pala Mark Lapid with us. Of Tiesa, Mark Lapid.
Dan, good afternoon po, Senator.
Relation of another famous senator here. Okay, Mark, yes. Governor Bampanga.
Good afternoon po, Sabi of the.
Good.
Good afternoon, Senator.
Hi, Mark. Good. Sige, thank you. Who's next?
Yes, for Region Five, we have with us Regional Director Herbie Aguas.
Maray na hapon po, Herbie Aguas po, Bicol Region.
Herbie, that's smart. Ay na hapon sa Indonaka Bos.
Yes po.
Your name is Aguas? Are you related to the former registrar of the Ateneo?
Um, marami nagtatanong po, pero mukhang, ano, distant relative na po.
You better be smart because she's smart as a whip.
Ayah, yes daw po.
And you wash your hands every day because of the pandemic, right?
Yes po, yes po.
Good reminder. Good. Next, please.
For Region Six, we have RD Christine Mancinares.
Region Six.
Senator, good afternoon. Good afternoon, everyone.
I'm sorry, I cannot see you. Where are you? Yes.
Senator, good afternoon.
There you go, it is going up and down. Team Mancinares. Yes, where are you from? Late in summer?
Negroes Occidental, Senator.
Ah, tabila nga pala, ano, sorry. Negroes Occidental, alright. Go ahead.
For Region Seven, we have Shalimar Tamano.
Shalimar.
Good afternoon, good afternoon, Senator. Good afternoon, Secretary.
Shalimar. Is that a man or a woman?
A man.
I didn't know they called men Shalimar. I can't see you. Show me your face, please. Push the button. Push video.
Yes, sir.
Where are you? Shalimar Hofer, and you're not related to the Congressman Hofer in, uh, uh, in Zamboanga del Norte, or? Right?
It's my first cousin, Senator.
First cousin, alright, okay.
And Hofer.
Why did they call you Shalimar? Shalimar is a woman's name.
My mom's name is Marlene and my father is Salipada.
That you were not a woman trapped in a man's body?
No, sir.
Okay, good. Thank you. Next, please.
For Region Eight, we have RD Karen Chopess.
Maupay ng kulub, Senator, from Tacloban City po.
Ah, there you go.
Yes po.
Ginawa ang bahay sa inyo. Thirty thousand na bahay ang ginawa namin ang request dyan eh.
Salamat po. Actually, I was one of those na hinanap niyo during Yolanda.
Ah, that's right, that's right. I was looking for you. Yeah, that's right. Thank you. I will remember. Thank you, Rosa. Thank you.
Yes po. Thank you po.
Um, for Region Ten, we have RD King. RD King.
Region Nine, is it?
Region Nine, who's her OIC again?
She, OIC Wentz.
Galesa. Wentz Galesa, OIC, for Region Nine.
I'm here, Mr. Senator.
Uh, where are you?
Waving my head.
Uh, Wentz Isla. Wentz ang pangalan mo. Wentz Galesa.
Wentz Isla Galesa, Mr. Senator.
Yeah, and they call you Wentz?
Opo.
Wentz, okay. Alright.
For Region Ten, we have RD May Salvanya Unshuan.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, Madam Secretary.
May Unshuan, that's right, yeah. And then May. Go ahead.
For Region Eleven, we have RD Tania Rabat.
Afternoon, Senator.
Where? I don't see her, Secretary. Where is she?
Uh, RD Tania?
Yes.
Good afternoon, Senator.
Opo, sige. Tania Tan?
Yeah, Tania Rabat Tan, yes.
Rabat? You're a rabat?
Yes po, Senator.
You're the daughter of, uh?
Uh, the late.
Of Pakito? Or the Pakito Rabat? Huh?
The late Mayor Luis Rabat, the younger brother of Pakin.
Ah, yes, yes. You know, Pakin Rabat or Pakito Rabat, as we called him when I was in grade school. He was really playing for the Ateneo Blue Eagles, alright?
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah. Good, okay. Next, please.
Yes, Region Twelve is also currently being handled by RD Shalimar.
Sorry?
Uh, Region Twelve is also currently handling by Shalimar Tamano because our region went on leave. The OIC went on leave. So it's now under Shalimar also.
Tamano. Are you related to Senator Tamano, Mike Tamano?
Uh, distant Senator.
Yeah, okay. Anything else, uh?
Um, I think Yusek Edwin. Have I mentioned everybody?
We have seventeen regions, diba?
Oh, I'm sorry, NCR. I'm sorry, NCR.
NCR.
I'm so sorry. Okay, uh, NCR, we have RD Woodrow Makiling.
Good afternoon, sir. Good afternoon.
I'm so sorry, RD RR.
Oh, Makiling.
Okay.
Yes.
That's a nice name. Was your name after President Wilson?
Yes, sir. US President Woodrow Wilson, sir.
Yeah, okay. What do you know about him?
He's the father of public administration.
What?
He's the father of public administration, sir.
Really? Why? I didn't know that.
Yeah, he, uh, well, I, based on my readings, Mr. Senator, he started
to revolutionize. He was the one who made the fourteen points after World War One, wanted to create the League of Nations?
Yeah, yes.
If you do not know, just answer yes. So, better.
Yes, sir.
Better to keep quiet if you do not know nothing than to leave no doubt when you say something.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Senator.
Yes, Senator, we have for the car, RD Jovi Ganongan.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, Madam Secretary.
Sino?
Cordillera, initiative region po.
Gabita?
Ganongan, Mr. Senator.
Ano region ka iha?
Car.
Car.
Cordillera, oh, my favorite. Very honest people. Very, very steep in cultural values, diba?
Thank you, Mr. Senator. Yes, indeed.
Yeah, are you a Caganai or are you a native or what?
Kalinga, Mr. Senator.
You're not indigenous?
I.
She is.
Huh?
Kalinga.
Kalinga? Yeah, right, right, right. Okay.
Yes, we have Director Wen Sorioso of the PCSSD.
I'm asking you all these questions so that I will know because I'd like to know what's happening in the regions. Region, which region is this now?
Um, we're, I think, I mentioned RD, Region Thirteen, RD King, Arena. She's there, she's walking.
Region Thirteen?
Yes.
Are you there?
RD King.
Good afternoon, Senator. Good afternoon, Secretary Melia Arena from Region Thirteen.
Are you from there? What province are you from?
I'm from Butuwan City, Senator. From the capital of.
Do you still have lolongs there?
Uh, hindi pa po nahanap 'yung mga kapatid ni Lolong, Senator.
Marami, dito sa Manila, lumaga pang. Alright, go ahead.
Uh, we have GM Benvenidochi of the PRA.
Benvenido?
Chi.
Chi or Chi?
Chi.
Good afternoon, Honorable Chairman.
Yes, I was only last year.
General Manager of the Philippine Retirement Authority.
So you are. Next, please.
Um, I think I've mentioned everybody already, Mr. Senator.
Who's in charge of scuba diving now?
Uh, Director Wen Sorioso.
So you have not mentioned everybody, have you?
Uh, I mentioned earlier, but, okay, Wen, Director Wen.
Good afternoon, Mr. Senator and Secretary.
Uh, can you show your face, please? Wenah, Sorioso. Uh, how's scuba diving? Is it picking up?
Slowly but surely picking up.
Wow, Philippines. Watch our water world. Okay?
Yes, sir.
And who's in charge of Corregidor?
Um, it's not under the Department of Tourism.
Oh, really?
Yeah, it's not. It's not under us.
It was under me?
It's not an attached agency.
Agency? Who's got it now?
It's with Cynthia Carion, but I think that they're, they're uh, with the OP Office of the President, not with the Department of Tourism.
Really?
Yes.
Such a shame, because that's a national shrine. Anybody else?
Um, I think that's all, Senator.
Yeah, okay. Can you show now? You have time to show the, what is the world situation, please?
Can we, um, show the slide, please?
And we'd like to get a copy of the PowerPoint if you.
Yes.
Can you email it to us right away, please? To, uh?
Mr. Senator.
Huh?
Yeah.
There you have it. Go ahead, go ahead.
Yes, according to the United Nations World Tourism Organization, global tourism in 2020 suffered its worst year on record with international arrivals declining by a staggering seventy-two point nine percent or seventy-three percent, which translates to approximately one billion fewer arrivals compared to the previous year. Um, do we have?
Fewer arrivals?
Yes.
And the total before was what? I thought it was eight billion already. People, no, not eight billion, but how many people traveling before? I think during my time, it was about, uh, uh, how many, how many, how many uh, arrivals? About two billion before, was it?
Hmm, do we, do we, do we have that?
On the slide, there you go. Five billion, that's tourism arrivals. We're talking about the world. And where do they go? Do they go to Southeast Asia? Do they go to Asia? Which is the number one tourist destination in the world today?
Um. Would we have that Asek, Yusek, Verna?
Who's in charge of foreign, uh?
Uh, it's Yusek, it's Yusek Verna.
Secretary Spain is the number one for now.
Sorry?
Uh, Mr. Senator, Spain is the number one, uh, um.
It has always been number one, diba? Second is France, is it?
France is the second.
It's the other way around, baliktad. For the latest data, it's actually France, they're after Spain, then the US, and they're after China.
I just wanted to know if they know their market is, uh, and it's about to say they interchange within France and the US and, and, and Spain.
Yes, that's right. Yes, Mr. Chairman, tama po kayo.
Uh, Verna, France, Spain, US?
Yes, po.
And China?
Yes, po.
Okay, alright. And what goes to Asia and the Pacific? Or Southeast Asia? That's really making it a little bit more. How many people went to, uh, if you include Asia? That would be just our part of Asia.
Thailand lang ang pumapasok sa top ten destinations.
Yes.
See, I told you.
Thailand.
Sir Marcos, you can be Secretary of Tourism.
Well, let's just generalize, just generalize.
Can you let them answer? I really want to know whether our people here know their, their market. It's important to me because I always look at the overview. Uh, alright, uh?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Just out of curiosity, kasi usually, pag may budget hearing, Yusek Bong is always present, but I don't see him now.
He retired already.
Who's he?
He retired already. Thirty-five, yeah. Yusek Bong Bengzon.
Ah, Bong, Bengzon retired? Oh, my goodness.
He retired already, thirty-five years in service.
Where did he go now? Where is he now?
We're not, we're not sure. I think now he represents the Philippine Hotel Owners Association.
Which association is that? Sorry?
FOA, FOA, Philippine Hotel Owners Association.
Ah, hotel owners, okay. So he'll be the beneficiary of whatever. Ah, hotel owners, okay, so he'll be the beneficiary of whatever money the tourism department can provide. Alright, good point.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Senator Nancy. Tourism, so he knows what you're talking about. Alright, now.
Memory.
When we go, when we go to uh, tourism arrivals. Uh, who's our number one tourism arrival so far? Which country? Don't tell me.
Well, um, pri- prior to the pandemic, it was South Korea that was number one.
Yeah, so still Korea, I remember, yeah.
Second is China, number three is the U S A, four is Japan.
Japan?
Yeah. Fifth is uh, um, Yusek Verna, is it uh, Taiwan or, or? Who's the fifth again, Yusek Verna?
Um.
Australia.
Australia, 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 I'm sorry.
Alright, okay. And uh, of course, uh, this has always been the perennial uh, focus. And largely because, uh, I'm sure Senator Marcos will have something to say here. Largely because uh, we're counting also our former Filipinos, uh. Probably dual citizenship now and they're counted as Americans. They're counted, uh, in South Korea, of course, there are very few Filipino Koreans, but uh. Uh, so, uh, number one would really be. Uh, in terms of Filipino Americans would be U S A, correct?
Yes.
Have you ever split that uh, to Filipino, uh, Americans of Filipino ancestry?
Um, Yusek Verna, we've been wanting to know, but mostly it's really Balikbayans who come here. Do we have a study whether it's Americans or Balikbayans?
Normally, Mr. Chair, it's uh, depends on the passport.
For a long time, I don't want to be called Mr. Chair. I don't have a wooden heart. I am a man, alright? Thank you.
Um, what we have are basically based on um, passports. So this is how we are able to look. We, we do not have the data on former Filipinos. Although we also check with uh, other agencies on.
Do you remember our Tourism Partnership Program, our Tourism Volunteer Program where we asked. Filipinos, uh, or Americans of Filipino ancestry could bring home a tourist? So we have to find out who they are, wouldn't we? And that's a simple matter of uh, checking in the tourism arrival whether they're of Filipino uh, ancestry. Would that be fair? Verna?
I'm sorry, yes, Mr. Senator.
Verna B.
Yes, Mr. Senator.
I think you should try and make that happen because uh, especially during these times of hardships. Uh, we can always rely on the ever reliable Balikbayan, especially when, for example, their relatives uh. Uh, pass on, they come over, when they're sick, they come on, they come down, right? And how do we count uh, the OFWs? Are they counted separately?
Hmm, they're not counted as tourists.
They're not counted as tourists?
They're not.
Alright, okay. But I think uh, there should be a separate uh. Uh, spot for them because they could also bring uh, friends where they work, right? Like the nurses in Britain or the nurses in Germany, they could bring German friends, right? Or British friends, and I know that for a fact. So it's always good to have that. Uh, would you accept that suggestion, Verna, Verna Suseso?
Yes.
Huh?
Mr. Senator, we accept your suggestion.
Yeah, thank you. Alright, now having said that, uh. Uh, I will go right to the chase. I don't want to keep you here for a long time. You know, numbers are numbers. Uh, what are we doing to attract tourists today? Because Singapore. And uh, Thailand hasn't seemed to miss a bit, a beat. They still have their tourists. How many arrivals uh, in Thailand? How many arrivals in Singapore? Of course, Singapore kinda, you know, it's a. Uh, you know, it's what we call a hub, and people pass by overnight and they count as tourists. But Thailand certainly. How many ta- tourists does Thailand get? International?
Uh, right now for twenty twenty-one, it's only Phuket that's open in Thailand for tourists. The other places in Thailand are not yet open.
Yeah, but how many do they arrive? How many do they get internationally?
Right now, it, um, I, well, uh, prior to the pandemic, prior, uh, this is, this is.
Yes, I'm listening. How many, how many arrivals from?
Yusek Verna, prior to the pandem- prior to the pandemic, but this is actually twenty twenty.
Mr. Chair, on the slide, you will see Thailand here. Sorry.
Mr. Chairman, please.
May I be heard? Mr. Mr. Senator for Thailand. In twenty nineteen, Thailand received about thirty-nine point ninety-two million tourists.
Thirty-nine point nine, and how many are they getting now?
Six, in twenty twenty, we have the figure twenty twenty, it's to six point seven million.
How many?
Six point seven million.
Six point seven. And how many arrived in the Philippines on, of late?
For two thousand twenty, um, we only counted uh, one point four million. Because uh, we still have travel restrictions. So far, only Balikbayans are allowed to come.
Uh, we don't allow foreign tourists to come in?
Not yet, not yet, Mr. Chair.
I see a lot of them in Sergao.
Um, no, they are, they, they were, they stayed here, they didn't, they, they never left.
Sorry?
They never left. They were here pre-pandemic.
So you have how many in the Philippines and you call it the account, uh, see, you count as Balikbayans.
If you count uh, January and Feb, January of twenty twenty to Feb before the lockdown. We, we had about one point four million tourists.
So the lockdowns have really hurt us. And how come uh, Singapore seems to have gotten their way?
Singapore is not yet open for tourists, Mr. Chair?
I, I, I don't think so. I think they have, I, I just have.
I have a quarantine of two weeks, but they're open, especially to uh, Hong Kong and other greenlit countries. They just had a temporary uh, lockdown. Pero, pero bukas na sila, and they're collaborating with Hong Kong for no quarantine at all.
Yeah. What do you say about that, uh, Secretary Verna?
Um, well, right now, it's really Phuket that's uh, accepting fully vaccinated because they are already fully vaccinated. Well, in Singapore, um, well, not, um, Yusek Verna, let's forget for Singapore.
For Singapore, uh, Madam Secretary, um, basically, they have um, um, green corridors. But they do not really accept um, leisure travelers per se. They're, they're based on the green corridors that they have with.
They're based on what?
Green corridors, travel models.
Yeah, the, the countries that they've greenlit, like Hong Kong and Australia earlier, previous to the breakout. And New Zealand, places like that.
So they accept them, right?
The, the Australia and New Zealand are still uh, not uh, operation.
They were temporarily removed, kasi nga nagka-breakout.
America accepts.
I'm sorry, is it alright to ask about the branding budget since we're already talking about international tourism?
You can ask any question. I'm just trying to find out what the overview is. Uh, if you'll pardon me. I'm trying to show what the overview is so that we can ask the right questions.
Okay.
And if you'll let me finish, if, uh, I'll, I'll, I'll say it right now. What about domestic tourism? Are we allowing domestics to travel? Uh, to Boracay? I know that you're already vaccinating them before they go to Boracay, is that correct?
Yes, Mr. Chair, seventy-three percent of the tourism workers in Boracay are already vaccinated.
Alright, and how many have arrived in Boracay? Do you have a count? Who's a domestic tourism? I only, I only cited international tourism. But you know, in my heart, Verna knows this. Uh, in my heart, I've always aimed for the domestic tourism. That's why we did Wow Philippines. To let the Filipino travel to our own destinations because at that time, we didn't even know what was uh, in other provinces. And there's a plethora of that. We got people to know what was in Lawag, what was in uh, Pagod Food, uh, we got people to know. Uh, what was in Bagan, uh, because they brought it here, where to stay in Bagan, where to stay in, uh. You know, Iloilo, we got everybody to know that, and that's when they started traveling. And then. Uh, Cebu Pacific caught on and they finally had a lot of promos for domestic tourism. Isn't that correct, Verna?
That's correct, Mr. Senator.
And we suddenly had, uh, at last count, I don't know if uh, uh, Mr. uh, Canisal is there? I'd like to ask Mike, um, Milasai, how many? How many domestic, uh, what was the height of the domestic tourism? I think was it, somebody told me it was sixty-nine million, even eighty-nine million?
A hundred ten million.
Sorry?
A hundred ten million.
A hundred ten million? So practically, the whole country traveled?
Hmm.
And how much were the receipts?
Uh, the receipts, wait, look for it, there.
You know, I, I, I don't really count out the figures that are thrown at me. I, I just want to make sure that uh, uh, we get something back uh, for the buck. Do we still follow, uh, uh, what was what we used to say, the tourism uh? How do you use to call it, Verna? Tourism uh, account?
Satellite account.
Tourism what?
Tourism satellite account.
Yeah.
Satellite account, that's right. We used to follow that, right?
We still do, Mr. Senator. Yes, we still use it.
Oh, so how much was the uh, panalo sa domestic tourism at the height of a hundred and ten million?
Um, it was a three point one four trillion pesos.
Three point one trillion?
Yes, in two thousand nineteen.
Today, Senator Marcos? Oh, no. Diba? Magaan ang budget natin ngayon?
Um, can you flash, Asik Hawi?
What percent of the budget does tourism get of the five trillion budget? Which is really uh, an astounding, uh, break the record amount.
It's three point five billion.
Trillion, you mean to tell me you had three trillion residents from tourism?
Hmm.
If I was president, I'd give you a lot of money right away. That's why I made it that tourism is the engine of growth. I'm not saying, I'm talking about me, I'm talking about the people who will earn a lot. How many jobs did we generate out of that three trillion that you?
Pre-pandemic, it was five point seven million.
A hundred ten million people traveling? That should generate, you know, for, there were statistics before. Uh, for every uh, uh, million pesos, uh, how many? I mean, for every, for our budget, you should divide the budget of tourism divided by the one ten trillion, and that should be what you get, right, Verna?
Yes. So pre-pandemic, we employed five point seven million.
Five point seven million to handle a hundred ten trillion? I, uh, I don't think, uh. Secretary, uh, Verna, I'm not trying to find out what you do not know. I'm here to find out what you do know. Uh, it's important that uh, uh, when you say five point seven million, then. I will now ask the kudegrah question. How much are we doing to help our tourism industry people get back? Because I don't think we should remain locked up. I think we should open up places that we can uh, corral. Such as Palawan, such as uh, you know, and with strict uh, measures of protection. What are your thoughts on that?
Hmm, um, a lot of our tourist destinations are actually, are already able to open under, under M G C Q, M G C Q. Um, and in fact, with Alert Level Four, the Alert Level system now, we are allowed to travel. From N C R to all the different tourist destinations as long as they are allowing tourists.
You know, I have to defend the budget on the floor, right, Senator Marcos? I'd like to give this to Senator Marcos to be defended on the floor. Because I think she already knows more than me now. But in reality, when I go on the floor, my colleagues are going to ask me all these questions. It may seem embarrassing questions right now, but you have to teach me how to answer.
Yes, Mr. Senator.
Kan di maniwala sa akin, na sila sabi niyo, five point seven million. Uh, do you know what that represents in terms of income tax payments? You see, that's where our tourism statistics will come from. And when you go to the cabinet. You should be able to tell your president that this is what we contribute and therefore, you should be able to tell your finance secretary. And the D B N that you should be given more money. Don't you think they will be convinced?
For, yes.
Chairman?
Yeah.
Yes.
No, just to add to your question, did they do that? Did they?
Yes, we did.
Well, I, I'm glad that Nancy uh, gave the answer. I was trying to be nice. Oh, yeah, did they do that?
And what, what did you tell them? What, what did you ask?
I'm sorry.
Oh, no, but based on ano, we, we're always fighting for our budget. So what we asked for, um, um, and that was what given to us.
I am trying to protect your budget, Secretary Romulo. I will always provide a lot of budget for the second, for the uh, Department of Tourism, you know, because you, as you say. Make a lot of points, and in, if you're in the N B A, you know, somebody making a hundred ten million people travel. And making uh, supposedly three trillion uh, pesos. Should get a large portion of the budget. They would pay, be paid in uh, uh, they would be paid like Michael Jordan. Right? You're the Michael Jordan of tourism, of uh, the government. Especially in these times where our foreign direct investment is extremely down. Yes, Senator Marcos, you had a question. You know, I always uh, react to you when you raise your hand.
Is it timely to ask questions on the budget?
Am I already asking you? Go ahead. Are, are you gonna follow through the question that I just asked? I would appreciate that. Because we have to keep in, in, uh, in, in a point.
Yes, basically, uh, it's the same question that the first year on year since uh, Secretary Verna sat. And that is the hotly contested one point five billion used for branding. Um, we would like to know how this was used in the past, given the rather miserable. And quite horrifying figures of uh, twenty twenty. Of course, this has nothing to do with branding and entirely to do with the pandemic. Nevertheless, do you think that this huge amount should really be given to international marketing? When we are on everyone's red alert infection list?
Hmm, yes.
Before you answer, that's why, Senator Marcos, I said, my baby has always been domestic tourism. I just want to make sure if tourism in the world has fallen. Domestic tourism should not be falling, and that's what I uh, hang my jacket on when I was Secretary of Tourism, domestic tourism.
Mr. Chairman?
Let's go ahead.
And that, ju- just to add dun sa question ni Sen Amy. Um, siguro, it's also good to know what is the need of the industry right now? And can the budget of D O T address those needs? Diba? So baka nga, 'yung budget natin for international branding is uh, better used. Uh, to, to help the industry.
Even for domestic branding, considering that uh. Uh, so many different levels of alert, of lockdown are still in place. Uh, domestic branding at this point seems premature and unnecessary. Shouldn't it be better endowed as previously stated in last year's hearing by our chairman? Uh, in product development, new destinations, training in languages for tourism workers, and so on and so forth.
That's what I said last year, that you should be prepared.
That's why I'm quoting you, po.
Yeah.
Have we done anything to uh, address the uh, realignment that seems so patently obvious to all the members of this committee?
Mr. Senator?
What is your answer?
So, what, so, um, what exactly now is the, I'm sorry, there are so many questions ongoing?
Simple question, how do you justify a one point five billion budget at that time? When uh, the Philippines cannot even receive tourists? We are barely welcome in any country given our rates of infection? And uh, we are embarking on this exceedingly expensive branding campaign of six hundred thirty million? For international marketing when there are hardly any international rights? Branding and other supports of seven hundred and five million? Country bank brand development of a hundred million? Isn't this enormous amount better dedicated to simply vaccinating tourism workers? And other uh, employed persons?
Yes, Mr. Senator.
Yes, please.
Yes. Um, actually, for twenty twenty-one, we actually didn't get one point four billion. It was reduced.
Okay.
To, um, um, it was only reduced to, um.
One point two million naman to dati, diba?
Um, it was reduced to.
Nayon palaki ng palaki, naging one point five pa.
Yes, but for twenty twenty-one, it was actually reduced only to uh, four hundred million. The branding, the branding was reduced. It was reduced by one billion. Um, Asik Hawi, could we?
One billion is still a huge sum for, for uh, marketing during a time there's hardly any travel.
Uh, Mr. Senator?
Yes, please.
Five hundred, uh, we only got four hundred million from the initial one point four billion allocation. So one billion pesos was allocated to the Balayanihan too.
Yes, so four hundred went to what, please?
Uh, four hundred million went to domestic promotions, uh, Senator. So, uh, because.
Twenty, we were all in lockdown. Bakit pa kayo nagba-branding? Nakakapagta ka? Yeah, I'm just, uh.
In the second.
There are I A T F citations also of the Department of Tourism's double standard in the enforcement of lockdowns and rules under the guise of branding and marketing. Maraming sinasabing Boracay City Gardens versus Tim Yap Party in Baguio with an alleged eight million sponsorship given to the city, and so on and so forth. Including, uh, the Vicky Bello, siyempre kaibigan na tatan in Bohol, all, uh, all given towards marketing and branding. Is this so?
Um, Senator Amy, we didn't fund the Tim Yap. We didn't fund that. That was not, that was not the Department of Tourism who funded the Tim Yap in Baguio.
But there was in fact, through the, there was in fact a sponsorship of eight million through the L G U.
But that was not through the Department of Tourism. Uh, we were not involved in that at all.
But you should be thankful that the local government is taking the initiative, which is my next question with the permission of Senator Marcos.
Yes, yes, of course. No, I, I, I have no problem with L G Us taking the cajals for tourism.
Yeah, I have no problem with that. And my question there is, couldn't we encourage uh, the local populace to travel within their destination? When I go to Subic, the beaches are full during weekends.
Yes, Mr. Chair, they're now traveling by land in, in, in Baguio. We were the ones who donated their, um, Visita program, their online registration system, also for Region One, where the tourists, um, log on there so that, um, they can visit because.
They can be what? They can be what? I'm sorry.
Visit. They have this online registration system. We've been donating to all the L G Us. Um, so that the tourists log there and they find out what are the, um, what are the, uh, condish, uh, protocols that are needed for them to be able to enter an L G U. Um, a lot of the destinations, though pwede na magbukas for tourism, they don't want to open. So it's at the end of the day, that's still the L G U.
The question is, the L G Us are quite confused by what they consider a double standard by D O T of enforcement for I A T F rules. Kasi sa Boracay City Garden, Tim Yap's party, Boracay Faith Test, okay. But in other, in other instances, the D O T has not expressed any, um, any, um, uh, condemnation or sanctioned any of.
Of course, we, we, we were, um, Senator Amy, we were against the Tim Yap party. First of all, we did not fund it, and then we came out strongly against it. And every, every time there's a mass gathering, we are always against, we are always im- um, implementing health and safety protocols.
Pasensya, I have to ask this question. Kasi hinaharapin ko 'yung tungkol dito, no? Yung, uh, yung tungkol que Scarlet Snow Bello, no? Face mask, no face shield, Vicky Bello, Bohol, travel. Kung alam mo, ibinigay lang to sa akin eh.
Correct. Noong June, noong, noong May thirty one.
And this is all charged to branding, to the two of one point five billion. Medyo masakit in a time.
In, hindi po one point five billion ang ginastod siyan.
Hindi, pero one point five billion.
Excuse me.
Wala po one point five billion.
The Secretary of Tourism, please wait for the Senator to pronounce. Then if you want to have an altercation in the airwaves, so that we can understand one another.
Sorry, 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 Mr. Chairman, for unruly behavior. I'm not just.
No, you're not unruly. The resource person has got to listen to the questions, because this is our time to question the budget, so we can help them adequately. So if I were the secretary, I would listen to the questions. And it, these are not criticisms, alright? Take that, when you come in here, especially on budget time, these are not criticisms. These are just suggestions. And of course, sometimes you cannot help, but you know, uh, make some pointed remarks, because if that's not being done, the Senate has the right to ask those questions and to guide you. And all I'm saying is, in the interest of the courtroom, we may have a courtroom, but if we do not have the courtroom, it will not go anywhere. Alright, go ahead, Senator. So, uh, everybody's admonished to listen until the question is finished, and then you may answer. Go ahead.
Thank you very much, uh, Mr. Chairman, my good Senator Gordon. The problem is that, uh, we are all looking for funds to, uh, uh, finance our vaccine and treatment allocations. And the stunning amount of one point five billion for branding becomes increasingly difficult to defend. I think this was the same issue that we encountered last year, for which we have not received sufficient explanation. In addition, over the past year, which has been tough for everyone, most especially for the D O T, I am sure, a great deal of criticism has arisen, both on social media and elsewhere, regarding the so-called branding exercises, uh, involving many personalities, but also alleged double standards and failure to enforce I A T F rules and other health protocols. So, uh, in order to defend your budget, including the one point five billion in plenary, I think, uh, we need an explanation from the secretary.
Mister, Ms. Senator Amy?
Senator, go ahead.
Yes, first of all, we did not fund the Tim Yap. That was, we were not involved at all. In fact, we gave out statements. And we even issued a notice to explain to Manor regarding that incident. We had, we were not connected to the Tim Yap incident. With regard to the Scarlet Snow Bello.
Explain to me, it's just, uh, it's just that the question keeps, keeps coming back.
Okay, but, um, at, at least, thank you for clarifying this, Senator Amy. I'd like to put it on record that we were not at all involved with the Tim Yap incident. Now, with regard to the Scarlet Snow Bello, um, May thirty one, the, the I A T F already agreed that travel would be allowed for no, uh, no age restrictions. Uh, Senator Gordon, Senator Amy, we are always pushing for travel with no age restrictions because Filipinos travel as a family.
Failure to use a mask, face shield, exercise.
Senator Amy, I can assure you that we were wearing our mask and face shield the whole time. That was only one picture with Scarlet, one picture, and we were even one meter apart. But all the other pictures, we were all wearing our masks and face shields. We are very.
Mr. Chairman? I'm so sorry. It's exceedingly controversial. Sorry. Pati 'yung Bohol trip, bakit ni question? Bakit nung binayaran 'yung napakamahal na Bohol trip in the time of COVID?
Alright, uh, Senator Amy, with your permission, I'd like to call, uh, I'd like to call Senator Binay.
Yes, yes. No, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, go ahead.
Pasensya na Secretary Verna, but I saw the pictures. You're, I mean, there were violations, that you were not wearing mask, there was no social distancing. And in fact, I, I also don't agree dun sa pinupusyal D O T na we will allow children to travel, but we don't allow them to go to school. Diba? So parang, uh, and then I saw pictures pa of, um, 'yung Lobok Choir, which are kids performing in front of, sila Scarlet Snow Bell, when those kids cannot even go to school, but they can in, you know, but they can perform in front of tourists. So parang what, parang 'yung sense of priority natin eh nawawala. And I think ang isang issue ko pa kasi is every time that you open a certain destination, ang nangyayari po kasi, Mr. Chairman, sumusunod, nagkakaroon ng surge dun sa tourist destination eh. For example, I think Ilocos, when they opened it up, um, hindi yata nor tesura ata 'yun. When they opened it up, a few weeks after, a few weeks after, ho, tumas, I mean, nagkaroon na naman sila ng problema with COVID. So baka nga, we need to spend a lot on how we will open it right in the new normal before we, before we start promoting it. I think yun 'yung, yun 'yung isang point na gustong iemphasize din ni Senator Amy in this discussion. Yeah, perhaps, uh, for example, spend a little bit on vaccination, as suggested by the secretary in several press releases, on tourism workers first, before, uh, we embark on all these branding gimmicks. Um, I think. And then, Sen Amy, siguro, siguro just to add, aside from test, from, aside from vaccination, kasi nga, diba, with this new variant, parang nag, ano eh, nagkaroon na rin ng, uh, we need parang more extra, uh, ano ba 'yan, protocols. For example, 'yung mga, 'yung, baka dapat, meron silang access to free, uh, COVID testing, diba? Regularly, merong, merong, may, may assistance si D O T dun sa mga health workers natin. And then, assuming na may magpositive dun sa mga tourism workers natin, baka maganda din, may assistance na pwedeng ibigay si D O T, uh, for them to volunteer and quarantine themselves. Kasi nga, ang nangyayari ngayon, ayaw nila magpa-test, kasi nga, hindi sila makakapagtrabaho, diba? So hindi natin na, na isolate ka agad 'yung, 'yung problema. So baka isa 'yun dun sa dapat pag-aralan, uh, on how to, to open it right? So, so we can sustain it. Kasi nga, ang nangyayari ngayon, parang hindi siya sustainable eh. Diba? Igagastos tayo sa promotion. Tapos, magsasara din lang pala, kasi tumas, nag, tumas na naman ulit 'yung COVID. So it, it, nagiging vicious cycle, 'yung close, open, close, open. Yun lang po, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome. Uh, thank you, Secretary Binay. All your points are well taken, but I think the point is the secretary and the Department of Tourism must lead. Cannot be helter-skelter, and I'm not saying it's helter-skelter. We all want to travel. We all want our people to travel. But if I remember correctly, last year, I said, you know, for example, places like Boracay, you should have the load-bearing safe capacity, para hindi magse-search 'yung sinasabi ni Secretary Binay. This is the age of computer technology. And before anybody can travel, you will say, alright, on this, uh, three days, the load-bearing capability of Boracay has been reached, so you will not accept tourists until the next, uh, round. I think that can be done. And I think suggestions, uh, to, uh, regularly test our healthcare work, our, our workers in, uh, for example, Boracay or Sargao or certain areas, should be done once every two weeks. After all, the business wants to open, they should be able to take care of, uh, uh, these requirements. And, uh, you know, I've always known under Balanihan One that testing is to be covered by the government. That's why unfair 'yung mga suggestions na naniningil kami sila, because, because tinan, 'yung pinan, tinan test kami galing sa gobyerno eh. And hindi naman kami nag, one, unless nag-aapura. Marami sa tourism department kami sa nagpapadala sa amin, eh, sisingit do'selenean. So there will be uh, a cost to it, and they will have to pay for it. So, what is, what, what do you think of that suggestion? That you should have, alright, uh, every week? This is the, this is the, uh, load-bearing capacity, and there should be testing, and that, uh, they, parang nagche-checkin sila instead of a hotel, Hotel Boracay becomes the whole island of Boracay. And then they are followed through, they are traced to the hotels that they have. And you can more or less control what is happening there at. And you can do this in certain areas, like Sargao, you can do this in Subic, you can do this, and stuff like that, so that, uh, at a certain extent, you should be able to show family. Family, because people are already, uh, running amok in their homes. Hindi na sila makalabas. So, siguro, there should be certain family destinations that are not open to the general public, uh, that, uh, they can bring their families, for example, in Subic, or in Clark, or whatever it is in certain areas where when nakakapag, uh, Asian Games tayo sa isang lugar na malalockdown sila properly, na, na, there in what you call, uh, what daw dun, uh, uh, a balloon or something, uh, uh, what is the term for it? I mean, uh.
Bubble.
Bubble, a bubble, that's right. Mainang English ko eh. Uh, 'yung bubble, pwede siguro ng gawin 'yun. I'm just making a suggestion, Secretary Verna, and I, I'd like to, I'd like to ask the, uh, kaya ba ninyo 'yun? Uh, hindi naman kailangan magkaroon tayo ng mga show para magdagsa. Unti-untiin natin, kaya nga sabi ko, sa probinsya, pwede mag-sabi, okay, pagpasok doon, walang, walang walk-in. Oh, I'm sorry, but the two hundred limit has already been attained. Oh, papadala niyo ngayon 'yun dun sa lahat ng gusto magtravel, nagre-reserve, pwedeng gawin 'yan. Pagtiatagal lang, kami, meron kami sa big cross nung magpapa-test, tatawag lang sa one one five eight, may schedule namin 'yan. So yun lang ang suggestion namin dito, if you will, uh, Madam Secretary.
Uh, what, okay, um, thank you for all your suggestions. Uh, with regard to, um, testing, we're already, well, the carrying capacity is of course, okay. And prior to the vaccination, we actually gave, downloaded ten million to the province of Aklan, so that they could test their workers. But right now, what we're doing now is we're focusing on vaccination. Um, if we could put on, uh, uh, ano, flash on the slides of the vaccination of our active tourism workers. In, uh, in N C R alone, we've already vaccinated ninety nine percent of all those working in all the hotels and ninety five percent of the D O T accredited hot, uh, restaurants. For the whole Philippines, we've already vaccinated fifty one point five two percent. And we are already given an allocation by the national government for active tourism workers. So this goes for all the tourism destinations.
Pa-follow up lang, 'yung ke, Chairman Gordon, please. 'Yung carrying capacity ng Boracay, ano po 'yun, susipasyon ngayon?
The carrying capacity is actually nineteen thousand, but not too many people are coming to Boracay right now. So, um, the carrying capacity is nineteen thousand. No, not, not at all.
So nineteen thousand is the established limit, Po?
Yes, nineteen thousand is the established limit.
That's right, you put your, a little bit of advertising with a caution. You know, we're not gonna go beyond this, or maybe you should limit it to five thousand, para unti-unti. Pagsinabi niyo nineteen thousand kaagad 'yan, eh, siyempre, uh, baka matakot na kaagad 'yung mga tao. Ako, di pupunta ko nineteen thousand. Let's see, five thousand, baka bumunda na ako, diba? Uh, and you say that, uh, and before they leave, they should be vaccinated. And when there is a, uh, dun kayo magva-vaccinate, hindi naman araw-araw, hindi naman kayo pera mag, uh, mag, dun kayo magtest, pagdumating, pagalis, may test na naman sila para pagbalik. You know, the world doesn't stop because there's a pandemic. You know, it doesn't stop, because in the first place, there will be an endemic after this. It will be endemic to us, and we will have to live with it. And that will be the new normal. So, already, there should be a team at D O T C working with everybody, including the Department of Health, or including the, uh, 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 public health schools, to find out what is the thing, what are the things that we can do together, para we can start doing, uh, slow by slow, forgive my wrong English, no? Dahan-dahan, para hindi naman tayo, uh, kakikita pa rin 'yung mga tao, no? Uh, so.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Nancy, Senator Binay?
Yes, ma, ju- just to add to that, siguro dapat kayo palang, Mr. Chairman, meron ng study, what will be the carrying capacity with COVID? Cause I'm sure hindi, hindi talaga pwede nineteen thousand if COVID is still there, diba? So somebody, somebody needs to set the new, new standard with COVID. And kasama na din dun 'yung pagre-retrofit nung, nung mga facilities. Kasi, I don't think 'yung one hundred percent, uh, capacity for hotels, uh, I don't, mukhang hindi pa 'yan magyayari by next year, right? So, dapat paghandaan din natin, ano na ba 'yung papayagan nating, uh, capacity for, for hotels? And meron ba sila kailangan i-retrofit dun sa facility sila, para maging ano sila, uh, ano ba, COVID?
COVID proof.
Safe, diba? Parang COVID proof. And so dun pa pasok 'yung how we can help the, our investors in the domestic tourism. Retro, yun diba, prepare themselves para maging COVID-free. Yes, I agree, Po, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I made the effort of going to Boracay and was quite horrified by the situation where even five-star, six-star claiming hotels um, did not undertake any changes in their mask buffet, uh, facilities, did not undertake any effort to open up uh, enclosed ballrooms and so on. So clearly, um, the I A T F protocols are being ignored, even in the premier destination. The other issue, since we have brought up carrying capacities, that two days ago, I read that the Philippines is set to host the World Travel and Tourism Council in March twenty twenty, it having been postponed, um, from next month. Are we conducting a run-through? Is this going to be hybrid? Are there additional branding expenses to be incurred? And what do we, uh, see, uh, as revenue coming in?
Uh, COO Tanet?
Good afternoon, um, Madam Secretary and the Honorable Senator Amy Marcos. Thank you, ma'am, for the question. Um, we have actually conducted several preparatory meetings with the W T T C Secretariat based in London. And yes, ma'am, there will be run-through sessions that will be done.
Pero hybrid pa 'yan, or in person?
Hybrid, ma'am.
Tinapunan na naman ako dyan, World Summit, nakakatakot, may dadating ba dyan? Gagastos tayo, wala masisupport, kasi naka-red alert tayo.
Yes, ma'am. Hybrid po, ma'am, 'yung contemplated na mode of conducting the summit, just like the way they did it in Cancun uh, March of this year. So, dati po, ma'am, Amy, uh, that the summit gathers a thousand and five hundred delegates. In Cancun, it, it only allowed about five hundred to six hundred onsite delegates, which is also the same intent for the Philippines.
We still have five hundred, six hundred delegates?
Uh, yun, ma'am, 'yung nangyari sa Cancun, uh, noong April, yun din po ang estimation. 'Yun din po ang estimation.
Kasi this is going to be March 2022. Medyo, medyo takot na namang kami dyan eh. Mamaya, putok na naman 'yan at magkaroon ng, ng out break. At siguro, just add Senator Amy, dapat walang exemption 'yan dun sa quarantine procedure, di ba? Kung ano 'yung, ah- Baka takot-takot na naman 'yan, palibas sa bisita.
Yes, ma'am, Senator Nancy, we actually presented po before the IATF the developed protocols that will be observed and the IATF naman po approve them. Having noted na, as you said, ma'am, we will observe the, the protocols for safety and security. Tapos 'yung concern is, Senator Amy, ganun ba talaga kalakian? Fluid, ma'am, 'yung situation in terms of the actual people attending, but what Secretary has done is to-
Ang tapi nga ni Chairman Gordon, di ba? Magkano ang kinikita ng tourism? O magkano rin ang kikitain nitong world travel given the amounts that you'll have to lay out and the risks that we expose ourselves and our population to?
The Investments Committee, ma'am, with Yusek Verna is working on the, uh, the roadmap of the investments that we will generate from the summit and beyond, I think the financial computations if Yusek Verna would be able to share by now. The WTTC is also looking at this opportunity, ma'am, Amy, that we will really be able to also position not just the Philippines, but the region as a whole in terms of the global context nung reopening of the tourism, of course, no? So we are duly concerned, ma'am.
This is somewhat premature? Don't you think this is somewhat premature since we have not overtaken our infection numbers? Hindi ba dapat ma-vaccinate muna, ma-trick muna, ibagsak muna infection numbers bago tayo sumabak sa mga international summit katulad nito? Baka mapahiya pa tayo, baka magkasakit pa ang Pilipino?
Yes, ma'am, those were the very same concerns, Senator Amy, that we took note of when we continued to meet with the WTTC Secretariat. Originally nga, ma'am, dapat October, we pushed back to December because this really shows that we continue to monitor the developments. Hindi to tayo mamsusuong sa isang sitwasyon na malalagay din po tayo sa alanganin as well as 'yung sitwasyon po ng mga bisita nating darating, if ever. So everything is fluid, ma'am, in terms of the concrete plans, but for planning purposes, the WTTC Council has agreed to shift it to March, so that at least by the time they're anticipating that our target of achieving herd immunity by the end of the year would be something that we've realized already. Kaya po pinaprioritize dinisak Verna with the task force na ma-vaccinate po 'yung frontliners natin sa tourism. So do you know that, Senator Amy?
With all due respect, I think herd immunity for the Delta variant has been raised to upwards of 90%, which is unlikely by year-end. So I think the more prudent measure would be to postpone this further. I have no idea, Chairman Gordon has vast experience in this area. Perhaps you can recommend-
Senator Amy, may I intervene? May I just get Senator Gachalian, he's been raising his hand. Just give way to his twin brother, Joel Villanueva. Senator Gachalian, Senator Gachalian.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for finally taking notice of me.
Ako parang, ang hirap awatin itong dalawang babae dito. Ako pa sisisihim mo. Go ahead, sige.
I will be here away muna from Telia and Scarlet Snow. Baka naaagad naman itinulabi niya. But I want to focus on the macro situation and as the good secretary, what her forecast is this coming 2022 in terms of tourism, tourism arrivals, and tourism recovery? Because this is also hinge on what Senator Amy pointed out earlier, the tourism campaign program, no? Because obviously, the campaign program is hinge on some form of recovery. But what is the forecast of our secretary in terms of tourism recovery?
Maybe we could flash, ah, slide, slide 16? Okay, Senator Gachalian, we post here the DOT, we crafted the Tourism Response and Recovery Plan for, ah, to mitigate the impacts of COVID-19 to the tourism industry. The plan can be summarized through three strategies. Ensure protection of jobs and safety of tourism workers, visitors and communities. Second is support the recovery of tourism enterprises. And third is to rebuild the confidence and grow demand in the domestic and foreign markets. The COVID-19 response and recovery measures undertaken by the department over the past year are anchored on the TRRP. The DOT will be allocating 2.5 billion to support the implementation of the TRRP. Flash on the screen is the distribution of the proposed budget by strategic action of the TRRP. We can also post the revised NTDP forecast on tourism. Yusek Verna? What slide is that, Yusek Edwin?
I think it's in the, ano, 'yung sa, ano natin, the revised Tourism Development Plan. We, we, we had different kinds of forecasts depending on the, the, ano, recovery.
Okay, Yusek Verna?
Yeah, let's see.
If I may-
Yeah.
Come to see that.
Yes.
Secretary, um, in the revised or the reformulated National Tourism Development Plan, we identified possible scenarios moving forward in terms of tourism arrival figures. So these are largely hinged on the recovery scenarios that have been done by the UNWTO, the WTTC, Ayata and PATA. And through these forecasts, actually, they're looking at the recovery period of about two and a half to four years. Um, and in the forecast, we're looking at the upside and mild forecast, a medium to harsh forecast and a downside or severe forecast. So I'm looking at this for 2022. We're looking at about recovering about 43% of our 2019 levels. And by 2023, we're looking at about 76% of the 2019 levels. This is the mild scenario. But when it comes to the medium scenario, we're looking at about 22% of 2019 levels by 2022 and about 61% of 2019 levels by 2023. On the downside and severe levels, we're looking at about 3.2 million by 2023. And so basically that, for the domestic market, we're also looking at about 61% of 2019 levels in 2022. This is the upside or mild scenario. For the harsh and medium, we're looking at 49% of 2019 levels. And for the downside or severe level, we're looking at 35% of 2019 level. So these are all hinged on projections also by UNWTO and the other agencies and the PATA.
Thank you, Yusek. Uh, follow-up question, Mr. Chairman, if you allow. It is, uh, with all these levels, no? The, the employment recovery goes, goes without saying, will be delayed. Even at their best case, it's not gonna be, uh, pre-COVID levels. What are we, how are we addressing, number one, uh, the employment, the unemployment that was created by the pandemic in the tourism sector? I saw earlier in the slide when Chairman Gordon asked, there were, uh, there was about a million tourism workers who were displaced. So how are we addressing them? And how, if this would become a prolonged situation, how are we going to address them again this coming year?
Um, can I give the floor to Asek Rika? Mention the nurse framework of the national government, Asek Rika.
Yes, thank you, Secretary, Mr. Senator. To address the, the need and the assistance to be extended by the Department of Tourism for our displaced tourism workers, um, under the nurse framework, one of the strategic actions is really to, to retool and provide upskilling training programs to the various workers in the different industries. And for the tourism, so far as of August 30, the DOT has already conducted about 400 trainings on various topics for workers in the whole tourism value chain. 'Yun po mga nagtatrabaho sa hotel, mga tour guides natin, even our community tour guides, our trans, um, mga drivers natin in the destinations. Kasi we know, or even the boatmen, kasi we know that at this point in time, wala po talagang turista pag-aanong dumadating. So we are fully conducting our trainings through the regional offices to, for our tourism workers. Aside from that, another strategic action in the nurse, the National Employment Recovery Strategy, which is actually led by DTI and Dole, is the conduct of job fair. So DOT also has partnered with the BPO sector, the Association of the BPOs. So last year, we had a partnership with Concentrix. And then this year, we also had partnerships with Manu Life, Alcorica and some other BPO members of the IBPAP in the conduct of virtual job fairs. So tuloy-tuloy po 'yun. And we work closely with the industry associations in the conduct of this travel, uh, virtual job fairs po.
Except do we have a tracking system? Because of course, all of this upscaling, reskilling, it's good to hear, but we all know that tourism will be in the doldrums for the next few years. And also, no matter what retooling, reskilling, uh, they will not get employed, you know? Because walang turista, you know? That's basic as that. So in the meantime, what, what are you doing to help them? Because I'm looking at their budget and this type of assistance to tourism workers are not, uh, it's not in your budget. And also, uh, that's why I asked for the forecast, because in the most likely case, I think we'll be hitting 50% of, um, less than 50% of pre-bandemic level. So how are we addressing them if the budget is not here in your budget?
Um, Senator Gachalian, with Bayanihan II, we were given 3.1 billion pesos for financial assistance. So we will be able to give, but only 614,723 people for the Cash for Work Program. We also have under SB Corp, the Cares for Travel Program, which is a zero interest, no collateral loans, up to four peer, four years and a corresponding two-year grace period for working capital loans. Then the 1 billion was allotted for trip roads, which is under the DPWH. And we are, of course, focusing on domestic tourism because out of the 12.8 million contribution of tourism to the GDP, 10.8 was for domestic tourism. And of course, we are really still, we're focusing, of course, number one, health and safety. And only the LGUs that are under NGCQ or GCQ are allowed to reopen, but of course, the LGU has to agree to reopen. Um, that's what we're doing, yes.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, with the permission of Senator Sherwin?
Go ahead, Senator Verna.
Tatanong ko lang kung ilan 'yung takers dun sa SB Corp na Cares for Travel Program?
Um, Yusek Verna?
As of September 17, um, Madam Senator, we've had about 495 applications that have been approved and about 224.721548 million that have been approved in terms of amount and about 425 that have been released.
How much is that out of the total window?
193 million is the total released amount.
How much? Sorry po, sorry.
193 million is the, is the released amount.
So magkano pa 'yung natitira?
Eh, 7 billion 'yung total?
6 billion.
6 billion?
6 billion.
So, wala pang, may 1% na ba?
Sorry.
So ilan, magkano pa 'yung natitira dun sa 6 billion?
5 billion.
Marami pa, yes.
So ang laki pa, so walang takers dun sa program?
Um, at the start, Senator, Senator, at the start, um, of course, they were hesitant to borrow. One year lang 'yung grace period. But then ang ginawa ng SB Corp, kasi they were hesitant na humiram sila ngayon, baka in one year, di sila makabayad. So SB Corp extended the grace period to two years. Uh, so, um, that's, that's what's happening now. We're hoping that with the grace period of two years, more people will borrow.
Hindi ba may 10 billion ren na allocation to DOT? Kasabay dyan sa Bayanihan II? Sa langit na 'yun?
Okay, the 3.1 billion went to financial assistance, 5,000 pesos each. The 1 billion went to roads, which was allocated in the DP, with the, with the DPWH.
1 billion went to roads?
Yes, tourism roads under the DPWH.
In what way is that emergency assistance? That's in fraud, di ba?
But that was allocated by, uh, in Bayanihan II. If you recall, Senator Amy, we were asking for, we-
Yes, I recall, I recall. Because it was transferred out in the lower house from you.
Yes.
Thank you, Senator Sherwin.
May I, may I, may I just ask?
Yes, please.
Uh, if Senator Gachalian is finished, I'd like to go back
to an overview of what is happening. You say that for the next three or four years, we're gonna be in the doldrums. Uh, and that is for studies made by the UNWTO, is that correct?
Yes, Senator.
Alright, now, having said that, are we just gonna kill over and die? Now, I noticed you have Cash for Work programs for your 5 million workers. For fire, how many people are affected? 5,700,000 workers in the tourism industry? Just workers dyan, ah? Pero pa 'yung mga negosyente. So ilan na naibigay ninyo? Uh, can you give me a specific?
Yes, um, 3.1 billion was allocated to the tourism workers under Bayanihan II.
Uh, do you have a list of the people that have been given money?
Yes, we, we have a list and a total of 614,723 beneficiaries. We'll be able to receive financial-
614,000 beneficiaries?
614,723.
That's a lot, at how much, at 5,000 each?
5,000 pesos each.
And how much is that? About 30, uh, what's that, 30, uh?
For 3.1 billion pesos.
3.1 billion pesos, alright.
This was allocated through the Dole.
Through the Dole? Uh, may we have a list of these people, uh, that were given? Uh, so that, uh, in case I'm asked, I would be able to show it?
Yes, yes, Senator, we will be submitting to you.
Of that, right?
Yes, we have.
Programs that were allocated in the Dole. Now, it's, it's important. Now, you said you'd lend money, uh, to tourism establishments, but I keep getting complaints from tourism establishments that there has been no support. Na wala namang interest na, wala, sabi niyo, uh, may grace period pa. Walang interest. Uh, can you give us the list of the people that you gave, lend money to? And how much and for what for?
Oh, yes, we will ask the SB Corp to furnish it to you, Senator.
Who, who you ask?
SB Corp, SB Corp. It's, um, because we have, we don't have a credit, a lending institution under us. This was placed under the SB Corp. It was, this was placed under the SB Corp, which is under the DTI.
Under the DTI, okay. So in reality, you're converging with other organizations like Dole and DTI to get this money of the department to be funneled through these agencies, correct?
Yes, yes, Senator.
Because you don't know how to lend money. That's the business of DTI, and I hope they know how to lend money. Uh, it's just like PSDBM, they know how to buy, you know, a lot of products, uh, namabilis, you know? Uh, of course, to disasters, to disasters consequences. Now, we all know that the pandemic is going to be with us. I also know that it will become endemic. And I'm not gonna wait for what you call a herd mentality if I were, uh, in control, because there's no more, uh, target. It's become a moving target. Some say it used to be 50%, now it's 70%. Now it's 100%, no matter here. So you now are forced to live through a new normal. Do we all agree on that?
Yes, Senator.
And in the United States and in other countries, their new normal, for an example, I'm looking at the US Advisory, Temporary Travel Restrictions. They're allowing people to watch ballgames. I have a grandson studying in one of the universities there, and I see them without face mask and with other Asians, and they're watching the football game with wild abandon and enjoying themselves, alright? Uh, but on the other, and so far as travel restrictions are concerned, mercifully, the United States came out with a list. Anybody with the exception of US citizens, legal permanent residents and immediate family members who has been in the following country during the past 14 days may not enter the United States at this time. So lahat papapasukin, basta wag kang dumaan dito. Tama po ba 'yung bag, tama po ba 'yung intindihan? So, lahat papapasukin, basta wag kang dumaan dito. Tama po ba 'yung bag? Tama po ba 'yung intindigo?
Uh-huh, yes, Senator. Yes, Senator.
Uh, you sure, huh? So, lumabas dyan, paggali ka sa China, hindi ka papapasukin muna. Iran, United Kingdom, oh, kasama yan, ah, that's a very traditional ally of America. England, Scotland, Wales, Northern Ireland, Republic of Ireland, Brazil, South Africa, European, uh, Changan, Changan region, Austria, Belgium, Czech Republic, Denmark, Estonia, Finland, France, Germany, Greece, Hungary, Iceland, Italy, Latvia, Liechtenstein, Lithuania, Luxembourg, Malta, Monaco, Netherlands, Norway, Poland, Portugal, San Marino, Slovakia, Slovenia, Spain, uh, Sweden, Switzerland, Vatican City included, and India. Additionally, the US has reached agreements with both Canada and Mexico to temporarily limit all non-essential travel, including leisure travel across land borders, air travel between the United States and Canada and Mexico is allowed. Air travel is allowed between the US and Canada and Mexico. Uh, and therefore, it seems that they allow, provided hindi ka dumaan dito sa mga bansang ito. At kung ikaw lalakad sa America, may mandatory testing requirement, may mandatory mask requirement, and may mandatory quarantine requirement. Do you know if the Philippines is doing the same thing?
Um, in the, in the Philippines right now, the only ones that are allowed to enter are, of course, OFs, OFWs, and balikbayans.
You know, when Senator, when Governor Gwen of Cebu said nahihirapan sila dun sa quarantine, pwedeng papasukin na sila sa Cebu, at bahala kami, kami na mag-aasikaso. Uh, sinanda lang ko yan. I said, I, I'm, I, I think we should start living within your normal. And that's why I'm suggesting ways and means in this God's Tourism Department of the Philippines. Have you ever convoked the whole department, including the regional directors, to submit to you possibilities on how they can open up certain destinations in the various regions of the country? You know, giving travel standards for domestics, and maybe not for foreigners right away, but at least for domestics, they can introduce travel standards, and certainly limit, uh, you know, load-bearing capacity of the destinations. Have you ever done that?
Yes, I, um, the Department of Tourism actually backed me already as the IATF regarding short-term quarantine from those coming from the green list and those fully vaccinated. Travel bubbles. We've already brought it up to the IATF last May.
And, uh, what did they say?
Um, well, the health experts now, because of the Delta variant, uh, nagbago. Um, before, they were agreeable to shortening for fully vaccinated. But now with the Delta variant, um, in the IATF, we always just listen to the health experts, and they are-
Remember earlier, I said, uh, Secretary Verna, I said, we should contact, uh, get in touch with public health authorities from the university and from other places, or even from international consultancies, if you will. Because I think that properly handled, and properly, uh, proper rules can be undertaken and properly handled, you can actually have a living, you know, a living. For example, if they say we will only allow 1,000 in Boracay per day, and the list will go long, uh, a lot of people won't travel. And of course, if they can afford it, they can make adjustments. You can identify certain establishments that after a week of travel, then they stop, then another week later on, and maybe they don't even have to stop, uh, then they can disinfect and make sure that everything is going on. Somebody has got to do something to-
Senator Gordon?
Uh, I'm not yet finished.
I'm so sorry.
And introduce a new normal, so to speak. Because whether we like it or not, we either stop everything and close the department of tourism for a while, because anyway, there's starting to do, and nobody's doing anything about it, or we start taking calculated risks and go step by step in a slow but sure manner. And that is what I'm saying here. We cannot just leave and say, eh, wala tayong magagawa, talagang ganyan. Hindi pwede yan. Kailangan tayo, nagsisimula na magkaroon tayo ng mga programs na makakapunta. Certainly, pag sinabi mo, pwede kang pumunta sa Subic, o isang libo lang kay papayag, marami ng papayag, baka payagang pa ba't 'yung mga pamilya in certain areas in Subic, or that it's only reserved for families. Eh, hindi naman pwedeng one size fits all. Hindi naman pwedeng isang department lang ang masasabi hindi pwede. Certainly, ayoko ng mga, uh, closed gatherings, katulad dun sinasabi ng Senator Amy, na magkakaroon kayo ng concert, na walang mask, dikit-dikit, kahit ano sabihin niyo. Certainly, I'm not going to encourage panagbenga, although America even has football games now, basketball games, even tennis matches in New York. And yet, their, you know, their, uh, levels are high in terms of COVID. So hindi naman pwedeng, ilan tao lang ang magdiligtas sa kabuhayan. And provided we tell the public, your, your life depends on you, and the life of your family, and the life of your community depends on you. Perhaps if we learn to give them the right information, they might be able to do that. What do you think of that?
Um, yes, yes, of course, we agree with you, Senator, that we should live with the virus. That's why we are actively, again, first, vaccinating all our tourism workers. With regard to Boracay, let me flash on the screen-
Nagasakomon Boracay, miss.
Yes, not because we were talking about carrying capacity. Um, right now, the tourist arrivals are really will not, never go over the carrying capacity. From September 8th to 22nd, there were only 2,697 tourists that went to Boracay.
Fine. That's fine. That's a good start.
Yes. And then, um, um-
If we see 2,000 lang, then 2,000 lang.
Yes.
Following hotels will be open, there's quarantine, hindi na kayo lalabas, eto lang 'yung kanlang area ng beach. Oh, punta kayo dyan, kung gusto niyo. But take care, rest out.
Yes.
There will be restrictions in terms of testing before you leave. And, you know, you can go, uh, by land travel, uh, there is the Nautical Highway already. Let's say we go to Ilocas Norte, oh, eh, nakita ko nga sa, kuwan eh, I hate to say this, but there was a couple of domestic tourists, uh, very prominent people, namatay pa 'yung isa, nagcoco cane. Eh, bilang mo, namatay pa isa, nasa headline, nakakalukot. But, kala ko ba, hindi pwede 'yung mga ganyan na nakakabiyahe. Pabyayin niyo, pero dapat nababantayan natin, kung anong ginagawa nila, in certain hotels, dapat malinaw. I mean, we cannot just stay, ano sa, stop na lang tayo, wala na tayong gagawin. Di ba? Wala namang nayayari sa bansa natin. So at a certain point in time, for example, I was talking to some sports people yesterday, magbubukas na U double AP sa February. Oh, magbubukas dyan, uh, dapat talaga, meron ka mga mask, at saka, kung bubble ka, katulad dun sa ibang basa, na layo-layo na konte, pwede. Pero kung kaya na, kung meron silang, uh, 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 sinasabi nila na nabakunaan sila, may certificate sila, then fine, gawin natin. Pero we cannot live forever under a regime where thou shall not move, because our people will go hungry. That's what I'm saying. Now, uh, I'm just citing this para maintindihan natin na hindi naman forever ganyan tayo mangyayari, no? Uh, in the first place, I mean, I suggest, that's why I said, I report to- So I wanted the regional development, regional tourism, uh, folks to answer these questions. Can you not talk to, uh, you know, establishments in your area? Sino ang bubuksan ninyo? Ilan ang papapasukin dyan? Sunod dun sa kabila, ilan ang pupuksan niyo? Sino papapasukin niyo dyan? Ganun ang gawin niyo ang trabaho ninyo, para madama. At kung papayag sila, then meron tayong, uh, protocols, sinasabing in this province, and ibawa San Benito. Tumatanggap kami, usually 200 or 100, I don't know, I have not been to, I've been to San Benito, I never had a massage there, I never, I just saw it, which you can have maybe 20? Then may kitahan 'yung mga nabamasayo dun. May kitahan 'yung mga tao dun, 'yung mga pusenero dun, konti-konti. But eventually, you don't wait until you get everything done. You know, you have to stop, uh, start making arrangements. Am I, am I talking your language, ma'am?
Yes, Senator.
Well, I, I'd like to see you more aggressively pursuing that, and I, I can let my voice, it's a very weak voice now, considering that the president hates this representation, and that's okay. But I will always speak out, because we cannot forever, uh, put our people prostate before this situation. You're doing something, nagbibigay ka, ikosabi ko, sayang lang, nagbibigay mo. Then sabi ng gobyerno, magkakaroon nila ng mga sakit sa mga handi, tinatabo lang natin ng pera. Pero kung unti-unti, nagbubukas tayo, and going to a new normal, we will be able to do it. Now, I'm gonna ask you about training. How many guides have you trained since the pandemic started? You say Japan is one of our best, uh, tourism travelers to the country. You know, the Japanese are always worried about the people who cannot speak their language. They're very insular, but you know, if you start saying, hey, uh, we have Chinese people, not only in Japanese language and culture, you invest in that. By the time we get back to the, uh, tourism galore, you will have a lot of people who will want to come here from Japan, because they will speak the language. Would that be correct? I'm just using that as an example, huh? One example lang yan. Including the banqueros, including those who will guide the scuba divers, including those who will go watch the whale. These are outdoor areas, where if you have a guide that can speak, perhaps they would even come, uh, and go to, uh, Don Sol and take a look at the whale sharks. Don't you agree? Domestic yan, huh? Wag na muna ang Japan, lagay mo natin, pati domestic. Or you can, uh, sponsor groups to go into certain areas, outdoor, provided that there are standards to be set. I know it's hard, but that's the way, that's where progress starts, by being entrepreneurial and making sure hard becomes softer every day. Those are the things we'd like to hear from the department. Hindi 'yung, ay, baksa ka ang tourism, oh, baksa ka na lang, oh, anong gagawin natin para mga tayo? The Americans are doing something about it, other countries are doing something about it. Is there, you have in your training program 154 million? By the way, in DFA, I'm one hawk insofar as training people who can speak Chinese, speak Islam or Arabic, rather, I'm sorry, Arabic, so that we know what they're saying. We know how to read the newspaper. You can do the same thing. You can train Arabic speakers, you can train Chinese speakers, Japanese speakers, French speakers, to make us more friendly, German speakers. And if you advertise that, you can say, special program for German tourists in a particular area in our country. You know, choose, uh, where you want to go, and we will have a German, we will have a, a personal tourist guide that can speak German to accompany you where to go, and he must be skilled in that. I did that in, uh, in, uh, Intramuros and teaching, uh, we taught the cucheros how to tell them what are the sights, di ba? Uh, in here, we do that. That's why we, I, I, you know, we, we, we send food to the people, uh, uh, 'yung mga cucheros dyan, they're nagugutom na rin 'yung mga yan. But, you know, then you know how to bring domestic and foreign tourists around Intramuros. What I'm saying is, you have to start somewhere, and better now, because pag, hindi na namatay 'yung ginawa yan, pag nagbukas na ang tourism, huli na naman tayo. Ilan na ba na training nyo, di sa budget niyo na 154 million? At dapat magte-train tayo ng mga tao para sa new skills, or for that matter, uh, uh, food. Ang dami-dami 'yung mga food one yan, uh, na magagawa, even now.
Yes.
You know what you've done with the money?
Um, yes, Senator Gordon, Isek Rika here.
Yes, thank you, Secretary. Senator, um, Mr. Senator, for tour guides po, you are correct. We are really aggressively providing trainings for our tour guides. And as of, uh, yun na nga po, August 30th, we've, um, delivered, or we've trained more than 2,000 tour guides around the country. And this actually involves even the local guides or community guides po in, yun sa mga caves, sa mga mountain guides natin. And, um, actually, at this moment, uh, we act, uh, the DOT is a recipient of a language training program, program for Chinese speaking. And it is, um, this was worked out by our attache in China, and this is in partnership with the ASEAN China Tourism Center.
Rika, excuse me?
Yes, sir.
Bakit di Korean, number one yan eh?
Uh, sir, we're also, ano, um, together po with the Office of Product and Market Development.
No, 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 don't give me, don't give me terms.
Yes, po.
How many Korean-speaking guides have you trained? Right now, tell me, how many?
Sir, to be honest, we have none for Korean-speaking guides, because-
This is your number one tourist, uh, arrivals, and you're not teaching them? You're teaching your Chinese? Why the preference for Chinese? And dala niyang pembrere, pupunta dito yan, magninegosyo. Ang kailangan ninyo, 'yung pupunta dito, na maintindihan, kailangan niyo, 'yung mga kababayan natin, kahit na wala pang language, maturuan sila, eto ang Caliao Cave, all right? At 'yung mga, alam mo, meron pa akong tatanungsi ninyo, totoo ba 'yung Bat Cave na dinvelop nyo? Lumabas kanina yan, sinabi ng isang congressman, may Batman ba rito? We have a Bat, uh, destination in Subic, which we protect, we don't have to put up a Bat Cave. Does somebody answer that? Did the Department of Tourism spend money on a Bat Cave in Davos, Sur?
No, we didn't. Bat Cave? RD Tanya? Walang, walang Bat Cave.
I was reading the newspaper.
RD Tanya?
May I speak? Um?
Yes, yes, RD Tanya.
We, we have a Bat Cave in Samal, but, uh, has to, uh, budget put for the development of that, uh, for this year and last year, we do not have.
Saan ang galing 'yung pera yon?
30 million was given for the development of the Bat Cave alleged, uh, in the news article.
It did not come from the Department of Tourism?
And do you have any say on that? Uh, who's, uh, doing that?
That's probably under the LGU.
No, it comes from the national budget.
Um, RD Tanya?
Highway is built. 30 million to develop a Bat Cave, according to Congressman Carlos Sarate in Davos, Sur.
Um, but it did not come from the Department of Tourism. We will check.
I know, but I'm just saying, uh, just showing, uh, kung nakaka-spend sila dun, anong pinaghandaan nila? Darating ba maraming Batman dito? Yung sinasabi ko, maghanda tayo properly. Halimbawa, uh, weddings. Guam has the, uh, practically a franchise of Japanese weddings. The Marianas have that. Di ba? World of Weddings, I used to say. You know, I'm looking at, uh, a raft here. I think this is somewhere in Surigao or maybe in Bohol. You know, and they, they have weddings on board a raft, or on a, on a beach. Those are the things, the new destinations that, uh, that, uh, I'd like the Department of Tourism to put their mental prowess in these destinations. Those are the things that I can defend on the floor of the Senate. Right now, uh, going back to Rika, sino nagtuturo ng Chinese?
Sir, if I may?
I already asked you, don't have to ask if I may, and don't give me those googoo eyes.
I'm sorry, po. Um, sir, ano, it, uh, the training is in partnership, it's actually offered po by the ASEAN, um, Tourism Center, uh, Chi, ASEAN China Center. So it's in partnership with them, and it's a, uh, one-week, um, program, and really Chinese teachers po, and it's via online. Ang, ang, ang training. Chinese, sir?
One week? Chinese?
Um, yes, po, because it involves also 'yung, um, learning about Chinese culture, and really we're, uh, speaking the, um, basic language po.
Sure, not Chinese.
Apo.
Hiyoma, xao che, pyaol yang.
Xie xie.
Kwai kwai.
Xie xie. Yes, sir, so Chinese po.
What did I say?
Sorry, sir, I have yet to learn Chinese language, sir.
Well, you know, you can pick up, you know? Uh, there's Hokkien, and, and when I was a Tourism Secretary, I wanted the, uh, the Mandarin-speaking in Beijing to come to the Philippines. Nagawa'y pa kayo ng national tourism organization, tinaasan ako ng pa dun sa, sa lamesa niya. Ginawa ako, tinaas ko rin 'yung paa niya. Tinaas, ipapa ako dun sa lamesa niya, tinignan niya ako. Do not be obtuse. Sabi ko sa kanya, and this is the truth. So, you know, here ang gusto ko malaman, what, what else are you teaching? Are you teaching, uh, there is Alianz Frances, okay? You can have, uh, uh, maybe 10, or can later on do conversational French, or conversational German, right? I mean, these are high-spending, high-value tourists, but again, that's down the stream. But right now, nasa upstream pa tayo, mag-aral na sila ngayon, para pagdating ng oras, meron tayong masasabi sa ating tourism advertising, di ba? We have German-speaking tourists to accommodate you. And then the nurses in Germany can say, oh, may mga German po, ikakabit ko lang kayo dun sa German, uh, speaking and a guide. Germans love to come here, the Swiss love to come here, they speak French and German. Right? Right?
Yes, Yusek Verna? Um, we could mention the German, the French, and the Russian online, uh, of training courses?
It's, uh, thank you, Madam Secretary. Um, Mr. Senator, the DOT actually has also conducted the language training courses for German-speaking guides, for French, for Russia, and- language training courses for German-speaking guides, for French, for Russia, and also for Thailand. So, these are also in the background.
It's useless if we do not inform them. It's useless if we do not inform them, I would even have an arrangement, Senator, Secretary Loxin, if they have a Russian desk, that these people read Russian for the Russian desk. So they can interpret, that's practice, right? I would even put your Chinese speaking to read Chinese newspapers in the Chinese desk for the Japanese desk, di ba, practice 'yun, because if we don't use it, you lose it. So, please, ba practice sila, correct?
Chairman Gordon?
Yes.
Yes, nabanggit kasi natin 'yung iba't ibang ahensya na pwedeng uh mag-converge. There's a very large program for convergence of the D O T, mabalik lang sa budget, point seven five six billion, out of which only sixteen point eight oh four billion is clearly delineated with projects listed by the Public Works. However, um, the tourism development programs, the remainder of six billion is not clearly listed. Baka doon namang pwede 'yung mga language training na binabanggit ng aming chairman sa TESDA, DEP, EDCH, Dole, D F A, lahat dyan pwedeng magtulong-tulong dyan. What are these six billion other projects? Kasi wala namang breakdown, hindi katulad ng Public Works. 'Yung sa convergence po ninyo, 'yung twenty-two plus plus billion. Can anyone uh enlighten us as regarding these concrete programs? Baka namang pwede din 'yung language and other.
Eh, ano, eh, program, converging, convergence, budgeting, yun ang tinatanong na Senator Marcos.
Yes, thank you very much. That's the twenty-two point seven five six billion listed in your program, convergence of the D O T. Only sixteen billion is actually delineated by Public Works, whereas the remainder, the six billion balance is uncertain, it's unclear eh. All it says is tourism development.
Um, Asik Milla?
You know, that's why I asked individually, because yun 'yung mga regional direct, directors, no?
Oo.
Hopefully, they would answer right away. Ito ang mga tinuturo namin, itong dine-developed namin, uh, sa inyong lugar, dito sa Kalinga, gustong-gustong ng mga European na siyang uh Kalinga, tsaka 'yung uh.
That's right.
You can even have the Japanese going there, do sa Kyangan, where Yamashita surrendered.
That's right.
Boss, mga boss.
Dun sa convergence ninyo, maybe I'll just ask na lang a list and a breakdown as to how this fund is to be utilized outside of the Public Works projects. And as Chairman Gordon stated, the provinces, cities, or municipalities that will benefit from the six billion already indicated in your budget. Uh, and all the R Ds, as you said, are present, and they can, they can perhaps provide that listing.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Can they please confirm first, kung meron, kasi parang hindi sigurado sila na may twenty-two billion na convergence eh.
Um, yes, yes, um, we don't, it's, 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 it's all in convergence, it's not under our D O T budget. The only one we are aware of is the Tripsi with the D P W H. Uh, Asik Milla, ano ba 'yung sa convergence?
Yeah, pero, pero Secretary, the mere fact it's convergence, di ba dapat alam din niyo 'yun? Kasi you're part, you're part of the convergence.
Correct nga, Senator Nancy, yes.
Ang title kasi program convergence of D O T, yun ang.
And by the way, ma'am, by the way, if I may, that, those were documents you submitted to us, we do read your documents.
Asik Milla?
If I may be forgiven, I don't really want to go into numbers, because I could get you with just the numbers. I just want to see the essence of tourism discussed here, para we know what to do, because if we have the numbers, and wala namang kayang gagawin, masasayang talaga 'yung pera, pero kung meron kayang direction, makagawa 'yan. I don't know, masinasagay 'yan po, kayo naman, mas magaling sa akin dyan, di naman ako nagmamagaling dyan eh. Ang tinatanong ko lang sa inyo, kung pwede niyang gawin, abang wala pang turista, gamitin natin ang domestic tourism. Hindi dapat natin bibitawan niya kahit na kailan. Hindi kailangan pumunta ka sa fiesta, mag-advertise kayo, nung araw ginawa namin 'yan, may mga packages o mga regional director from Laguna, halimbawa. Meron kami, punta kayo sa Pakil, at saka sa Paiti, tignan niyo 'yung mga lumasimbahan, tignan niyo 'yung mga poste na nilagay ng mga Pilipino na pinapagalitan ng mga pryle, at tignan niyo 'yung mga bim, at nakapatatawa kayo dahil ginawa nilang buwaya, hindi nakakita ng mga pryle, 'yung ginagawa ng buwaya na naang do sa poste para patunay ng mga buwaya 'yung mga konquistador na napunta sa Pilipinas. Mga kwentong ganun, hindi kwentong kocero 'yan. At uh may kukuwento kayo, 'yung mga, 'yung mga, 'yung mga punta kayo sa Laguna, uh for a thousand pesos, may pagkain ka na, pupunta ka doon, papakita siya 'yun, at least may gagasusin ka. By the way, if I may, whatever happened to holiday economics? Whatever happened to that? Na kung may three-day holiday, pwede kayo pumunta, magbiyahe kayo by car, isang pamilya kayo, you go to a particular beach, you spend money, di ba? Kahit na paano, and taking all the precautions. Pinipilit niyo ba 'yan, pinupukuk niyo ba 'yan, even kung may normal na o wala, pero ngayon, tignan niyo, double ten, sa China in October. Nag-oorder na kami nung kakailangan namin doon sa mga test kits namin sa China, because magsasa na sila dahil lahat nagbiyahe doon. Eh, yun ang sinasabi ko, mga ganyan, dapat diyan to look forward and take a look at what's happening.
Pasensya na lang ah, Chairman Gordon, obligado tayo magtanong tungkol sa COA.
Go ahead.
Findings rin kasi sa audit, not almost half a billion has remained unliquidated uh from sums given by the D O T to government agencies, L G Us, R Os, N G Os, and some of them have been unliquidated for one year to over five years due to what COA calls the laxity of management in enforcing liquidation. Why has there been no effort to liquidate these utilized funds? Or perhaps unutilized, we have no idea. What has the D O T done to push for the liquidation of these funds? Pasensya kasi nagahanap talaga tayo ng pera para sa COA. Uh, half a billion to, it's four eight, three million, seven eight five million.
Have, um, um, Yusek Edwin, because for twenty-twenty, uh, the D O T received the highest audit rating from the COA for twen- for twenty-twenty. Um, Asik Milla, I'm, I'm not sure what this COA audit is, because we received the highest audit rating from COA. Twenty-twenty.
Asik Milla, can you, uh, be prepared a PowerPoint on this?
I've qualified the audit report, and as of December twenty-one, twenty-twenty two eh. So, it should be the last COA. I think you also submitted this document.
Para isang question na lang, ano, papakita ko sa inyo ito. Kalagay dito, of the total allotments budget of two point two billion, pakita niyo, about eighty-nine point fifty-seven percent or one point ninety-seven billion was obligated, I, so I don't wanna go to numbers eh. May rapag- of the obligated amount, only fifty-four point thirty-three percent or one point zero seven billion was actually utilized, and this brings including branding campaigns.
Ayun na.
Uh, it constrained COA to comment on D O T's operational efficiency. The COA report also says, COA recommended, and D O T management agreed, to properly come up with realistic work plan in order to maximize utilization of allotments and cash allocation. What is the current status of these work plans to increase D O T's operational efficiency to convince this committee that the cash requested by D O T will actually be used there by for its projects? See, kayo nabigay sa amin 'yan.
And, and if I may, uh, Mr. Chairman, para isang sala na lang, um, is it true that twenty-six percent of the seventeen point five seven seven billion in the total cash allocations was actually reverted to the treasury uh due to a project that was never implemented in Intramuros? Lahat tayo umaangal na walang pera, gustong-gusto namin na madagdagan ng pera para sa tourism industry, ngunit nagsosoli pa kayo ng pera sa ating treasury?
Um, okay, um, Admin Giliere, with regard to Intramuros?
Um, Secretary, I'm not aware of any fund uh that was reverted or given to us in that amount.
No, but the other points, the other points that were raised.
Um, Asik Hawi, regarding the branding campaign?
Yes, regarding the branding campaign, uh, while we obligated a certain amount already to procure for agencies, it's unutilized because in order for us to utilize and to pay our agencies, we have to launch it. But currently with the um often on uh local travel restrictions, we were not able to uh launch it earlier this year. So, this year, um, with more destinations reopening, we hope to sustain the implementation of all our branding projects, thus increasing our utilization rate.
I did not understand a word that you said. Kinda speaking Tagalog, ang Inglis ko, pasensya ka na.
Uh, hindi po namin.
Hindi niyo nagastos.
Uh, Senator, um, hindi po namin.
Bullokratis, magiging bulokratis 'yun, go ahead.
Yes, uh, Senator, hindi po namin ma-considered utilized ang budget because hindi pa po na-implement 'yung mga uh marketing tactics namin, because closed pa po 'yung mga um, maraming destinations early this year.
Don't ask for those, ask for something that can be done. Put for the tourism industry buildup.
Yeah, Asik Milla?
Yes, po, Se- Secretary, yes, po.
Hmm, oo, Asik Milla?
Yes, po, uh, Senator, um.
Who's speaking?
May I address?
Uh, Asik Milla Grosay?
Yes, Milla. Milla, I lost you.
Yes, po, um, naririnig na po ako.
Yes, I can hear you, Milla.
Yes, po, um, first po, 'yung mga um, unli- unliquidated po kasi, these are due from L G Us, and then we are um continuing to request them uh to submit liquidation reports to our offices, uh, nag-send na po kami ng demand letters. Uh, 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 we continue to exert our efforts to uh to demand for the immediate liquidation of fund transfer. Um.
Can you give us an example of what that is?
Uh, for example po, uh, in, uh, uh thirteen, for example, uh thirteen percent or fifty-six point five five nine million of the four hundred twenty-six million pertains to due from G O C C's account of D O T Central Office. And then po, some are.
What are those real projects, in real terms?
Uh, projects in real terms.
Halimbawa.
Uh, sige po, um, sec, uh, in open po lang po 'yung file. Marami po kasi ito, um.
With more reason then.
Yes, po, uh.
Kasi sinasabi rin ng COA na tuloy-tuloy ang paglikay ninyo ng pera, kahit hindi pa naliliquidate 'yun dati.
Yung ano na natanong?
During, that, ano po, eto po 'yung mga B U B, Senator. Ang example po nito, 'yung mga B U B projects pa.
Excuse me?
Sorry, what's B U B po?
Ano 'yun?
Uh, bottom-up budgeting. 'Yung pong mga binigay po natin sa L G Us.
Local government, para may magagawa siya, para may magagawa, para ulubak ka sa tourism, 'yung iba sa nasabi mo, Milla?
Yes, po, eto 'yung mga B U B projects, uh, bottom-up budgeting, matagal na po ito, Senator.
Doesn't make it right, ano 'yung mga project na 'yan, gusto ko lang malaman, I have that one idea, biga tatalo ngayon ako niyan eh.
Hmm, sige po, um, ha, sige po, Senator, uh, kasi po, um, 'yung details ng projects.
Hindi, ala- alam mo, Milla, you know me, how I work, you know, di ba, we work until late at night, right, when we were there, right? And we come out with the specifics. Kung wala kayong specifics, you never saw us flounder when we were before the department, before Congress. Our budgets would approve very fast, because we had answers uh to all the questions that they asked, and we could show specific instances, correct? Oito, tinatanong tayo dyan, anong specific instances? Nagbigay kayo ng pera sa local government, hindi ginastos, isabihin niyo, etong probinsya na ito, hindi nagbibigay ng pera, binigay namin. Madinang patabuli na 'yan kaaga, dyan di ba? Huwag niyo naiintayin ng COA pa, magabul sa inyo. Di ba, Milla?
Yes, po, Senator, in.
Okay, uh, submit to ask ko na 'yung mga projects nyan, para may maisasagot ako pagtangin 'yan.
Malaki-sya, one, uh, half billion, malaki-sya. 'Yung kanina, 'yung na-revert, 'yung sinasabing na-revert sa treasury, uh, maybe it's not directly under the D O T, but it certainly has to do with the Intramuros administration. This stated that the total cash allocation of sixty-seven point four one one million, twenty-six percent was not utilized and had to be returned at the year-end to the treasury. Once again, this derives from documents from you, from COA twenty-twenty, under the D O T. Eh, papano namin ipaglalaban ni Secretary, ni Senator Gordon, na dadagdagan ng pera ninyo, sa mantala nagsosoli pa kayo ng pera?
Uh, Administrator Giliere, was this before your time?
Um, I, I think so, Miss, uh, I'll have it checked, Miss.
Yes, how many years ago, yes?
Yes, I'll have it checked.
Oo.
Secretary, regardless, if it keeps recurring in the COA report, that means it's remained unsettled and uh should really be uh liquidated in some form.
Yes, Senator?
Yes.
Yes, Senator, yeah, we were having problems, a lot of this COA audits are those, even years back, and were uh not, not during twenty-twenty or twenty, twenty-twenty-one, uh, twenty, twenty-nineteen or twenty-twenty. But these are years back even before our time, but we will, we will be uh working on it.
Yes, just a little bit of a cause for alarm, Chairman Gordon, that they're not even aware of it. Whereas cursory reading of your COA report will indicate that there are all these red flags. Thank you, po.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, go ahead, please.
The, pa- pwede lang um balikan natin 'yung twenty-two billion, kasi ang type, the, the pro- the, the name of the program is Tourism Development Program. But D O T is not party of the, to the program, di ba? So how, I mean, how can it be a tourism development program? Kung 'yung D O T mismo is not part of the planning of this project?
Yes, Senator?
Yeah, so, can you explain to us the twenty? Can you explain to us the twenty-two billion?
Yes, the, um, that is usually submitted by other agencies, and we are just actually furnished a copy with, uh, with the exception of the D P W H, where they actually ask us, um, um, for submissions, the other agencies actually do not ask us. We are not aware, I'm sorry, we are not aware of the other agencies, they submit this to the D B M, and we are not aware of it.
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Parang, parang may malihiho dun sa budgeting process, na parang 'yung, 'yung agency whose main task is tourism is not part of the planning. Di ba, parang 'yung ibang, ibang department, mabibigyan ng pond, do, for tourism, tapos 'yung sariling D O T, hindi nila alam kung saan mapupunta 'yun.
Miss, uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, with the dispensation of Senator Binay, I believe that that's not entirely correct, because, for example, in the choice of Tripsi roads to be developed by the Public Works, it's the Regional Director of Tourism that signs off on all those lists. I submitted them repeatedly as governor, so I know of what I'm speaking.
Senator, only D P W H, with regard to Tripsi, we are asked for our um, 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 proposals, but the others, we are not.
What are the others? That's precisely what we're asking, because there's a balance brought forward of six billion in twenty-two.
Do we have Asik Milla, what they submit to the D B M on tourism development?
Hindi, kasi sixteen billion lang 'yung sa Public Works, pero 'yung.
Yeah, that's D P W H, yeah.
Oo, so may, may differential, saan napunta 'yun? Kasi sa Public Works talaga naman D O T ang lead.
Um, Secretary, Senator, uh, included din po dyan 'yung uh sa Department of Agriculture?
Mas listahan 'yung Department of Agriculture dun sa twenty-two billion eh.
Ah, sorry po, ay, mali.
So, meron, meron pang iba?
Yes, po, sorry po, na uh mali ng basa, uh, ang included po, Senator, ang included po dyan na 'yung D E N R, and then 'yung Department of Finance, Department of Foreign Affairs.
Finance, po, yeah.
Department of Health and then D I C T and then D P W H um uh and then uh D T I and then uh Department of Transportation. Um, yun po, Senator.
Chairman, may kulang pa, may kulang pa.
Yun ba yun?
Other executive offices tsaka budgetary support to government corporations.
Diyan, di lang natin nabayaran kasi na-implement naman siya.
Hmm, okay, okay.
Admin G, we can hear you. Admin G, we can hear you.
Ano request na lang natin.
Admin G, we can hear you.
Don't press the button if you're not speaking English. Uh, yes, uh, uh, Senator, I mean, are you satisfied with the answer?
No, I'm just perplexed. Maybe they can give us a better breakdown so we have an idea of the programs. Kasi 'yung hinihingi ni Chairman ko na mga training, language, upskilling, product development, destination development, eh yun ang dapat sa tourism development pero 'yung D O F, sa palagay ko, wala namang pakialam dyan. Yung uh D F A, wala rin pakialam dyan. Kaya maybe you can give us the details so that we can better understand its relation, the relation of these funds and programs to tourism development. Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Senide?
I see, go ahead.
Um, parang din sa sagot nila, they can't give us the details because they were not uh in-informed about the project with the title of Tourism Development Program.
Oh, Mr. Chairman, nung Secretary ka, hindi pwedeng ganito.
No, no, I- I infer na si Secretary Romulo. There's so many things that are happening right now. Naglilipatan ng pondo, hindi na mamalayan, eh kaya dapat 'yung mga alala ninyo dyan, Secretary Romulo, alisto kayo dyan, there talagang malulusutan kahit malulusutan. Alin bawa, uh with the permission of the two gentle ladies who've been asking very pointed questions, I would like to ask, may- may budget pa ba 'yung tiesa kundi personal na lamang o wala na talagang pera 'yung tiesa ngayon? Malita ko kinuwan lahat, 'yung twelve billion na ipon ng tiesa ng Department of Finance. Is that correct, ma'am?
Yes, walang pondo po ang tiesa. Do- um for for, it was given to Bayani Han One, twelve billion.
Uh, so yun ang napunta doon sa kasama sa forty-two billion ba? Alam bang?
Um, we are not aware where it was put.
Well, yun ang problema. Dapat hinaharap natin kung saan napupunta dahil mapanay ang hugot ng pera doon sa lain agencies pero hindi natin nakikita kung saan napupunta. Ngayon, ang tiesa, anong ginagawa ng tiesa? May ginagawa pa ba kayo, saka Secretary Ma, ano, uh Director Mike, Mark? Wala kayong tourism infrastructure pero inagawan pa kayo ng uh ng uh D P W H, sila lang gumagawa, pati karsada rin yun, pati lahat, uh meron ba kayo nabubuksan na possible infrastructure and enterprise zones na mangyayari dyan? Is there an answer to the question, please?
COO Mark?
Yes, Mark, go ahead. Wala na kayong per- Mark, naka- nakakuha ka siguro, baka naka-mute ka. Mark Lapit, baka naka-mute ka, di kita narinig.
Sir, can you hear me, Mark? Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you now. I can hear you now.
Sir, uh as of now po, sir, suspended po lahat ng intro projects po namin uh because uh wala akong talaga kaming funds uh na pang-pang support po doon sa mga projects na makatabit na at ang gawin. Ta kaya 'yung mga na- na-approved na po ng board. Uh, so sir, gayun po, we're just asking right now is uh paano ka hinirin po kami sa ngayon uh konting assistance po para po sa operational expense namin kasi hindi talaga nambuti 'yung budget namin by the end of the year, sir. Uh, kasi po uh we all know po, sir, we're also relying po 'yung budget namin sa travel tasks.
So, lumalabas, wala kayong mapaplano para pag uh nagbago na ang normal, nagbago na ang kuwan, wala kayong magagawa. Hindi kayo nakakapaghanda. Tama po ba yun?
Sir, uh we're just preparing our people po, our frontliners, like the travel tasks personnel po uh tulad po ng mga sali ng normal, sir, pag-aapproach po sa turista natin, ikaw, 'yung mga akalis po, once once na mag-open po, uh yun po 'yung pini-train namin para sa mga travel tasks namin, sir. At tsaka, sir, sir, 'yung vaccination po, nga program.
Hindi, hindi, kasi dapat, di kayo nakiki-alam dyan sa mga ganyan eh, dahil lang dapat 'yung hinahanda. Uh, 'yung sinasabi nga natin, 'yung improving uh skills, improving uh upscaling, 'yung mga uh naghahanda tayo na 'yung mga bagong turism destinations na made-develop o 'yung mga pag-training o di kaya naman 'yung uh uh new normal for tourism. Mayroon ba kayong hinahandang common protocols uh para sa ganun eh uh masasabayang kayo ng ibang mga department? Uh, ano-ano, kano ka makakapagplano kung wala kang pondo? Ilan ba ang tauhan mo dyan sa tiesa?
Uh, actually, sir, right now po, meron po kaming uh total of two thousand employees po all over the country.
Two hundred and eighty-five empleyado, walang ginagawa ngayon, di ba kapag plano? Ganun ba yun?
Uh, yes, sir. Uh, fully, sir, nasa skeleton.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Uh, Mark? Walang ginag- talaga. Ngayon, hindi, hindi naman nila kasaralan eh, tanong na lang ka ng pondo eh.
Yes, po.
So walang pondo, walang pondo, walang ginagawa. And that's a travesty. Uh, who's in charge of uh doon sa tourism law na ginawa ko, if I'm not mistaken? Nakalagay doon na kung halimbawa, may mga disgrasyang abutin ng basa, katulad ng mga sunami, atugulod ng mga lalindol. Uh, bibigyan natin ng ticket sa mga, halimbawa, isa na yun dyan, no, napa- matutulungan natin 'yung mga turismo para babalik sila, ano? Uh, meron kayang Tourism Promotion Fund, di ba? Uh, 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 nasa kuwan, magkano 'yung perang natitira dyan sa Tourism Promotion Fund? Alam ko, meron kayang five hundred million annually for uh uh ilang mga taon niyan, di ba? At saka seventy percent of the fifty percent net income of the D L D J V uh duty free accord- according to the By and Leo Office's statutory witness to the National Underpublica otherwise known as the Dividends Law of nineteen ninety-four. Meron kayong nakugawa sa duty free, tama ba yun, Mr. Tourism Promotion?
May I ask, Sackburna?
Yes, yes.
Taned, sir. Opo. Taned, sir, Senator Gordon. Opo. Tama po kayo, sir, we have the, 'yung Special Contingency Fund, sir, uh which every year, opo. So, 'yung S C F, sir, that you incorporated in the law, uh every year it is uh actually ten percent of the overall marketing and promotions budget. So last year, sir, we had about hundred eighty-seven million and tama na naman kayo, sir, ginamit natin po yun for the rescue of the stranded tourists. Nagbigay po tayo ng mga vouchers sa domestic tourist then, kasi may mga stranded din po na domestic tourist. Included po doon sa report na nasabbit namin sa inyo sa Senado. Uh, kasama din po yun, 'yung nagproduce tayo ng mga care kits, 'yung mga sa uh may mga alcohol, sanitizers na pinaminigay din po doon sa mga turista na na-stranded at sa mga dumadating din pong uh pa-konti-konti 'yung na-mentioned ni Sackburna kanina na pag nagdumating po sila, nabibigay ng mga frontliners natin sa airport. Uh, this year, sir, we still have a balance of about seventy million sa S C F. Uh, those that we have funded for the first uh two and a half quarters of the year have gone to support, 'yung sinasabi po ninyo kanina na assistance to uh the swabbing of our frontliners, ng mga turis- tourism workers also. And kasama din po yun, 'yung assistance na binibigay natin na subsidy sa mga turista, yun pong fifty percent that we have as a partnership with P C M C. So, yun, sir.
Anong assistance sa mga turista? Eh, wala na ngang turista eh?
Yung mga domestic tourists, sir, uh doon sa mga reopen destinations domestically uh dahil part po ng requirement ay 'yung negative advocacy request.
By that, the Special Contingency Fund was supposed to cover 'yung mga gusto natin bumalik na turista, 'yung domestic, pupunta yan kahit na may COVID. Pupunta yan, makikipagsapala na sila, mag-i-enjoy sila doon dahil talaga nabuburo na sila sa bahay. Bakit niyang bibigyan ng pondo yun? May pera na yun. Ang sinasabi ko lang, pwede niyang gamitin 'yan para ibangon, ayun, nakalagay 'yan, linaw-linaw. Uh, this shall be used in the event of emergencies and this is such a emergency right now. Uh, so that D P B will have sufficient resources na mag-undertake ng marketing and promotional activities that will encourage sustained tourism interest in the Philippines and that will address the adverse effects of these emergencies. Kaya nga sinasabi ko, yun 'yung sasabihin dyan sa mga regional uh directors ninyo o mag-develop ka dyan na pwede nating maglagay tayo sa ating computer, na within the province, pwede kayong pumunta rito. At itong magat- nyo, lalabas mo yan sa promotion ninyo, di ba? Ginagawa niyo ba yun?
Yes, sir.
Gawa pa yan?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Uh, nagawa po natin.
Anong ginagawa niyo?
Nagawa din natin.
Like what?
There were five proj- opo. Sir, there were five projects that were initiated by our D O T regional offices uh along the line nga po of tourism recovery. Uh, so specific po ito, meron tayo sa Region Seven. Meron din po tayo sa kabigara. Sir, ito po 'yung ginawa ng office ng Region Seven in terms of-
Ano nga yun? Ano? Ano yun? Region Seven, are you there?
Yung rebranding nila, sir, 'yung opo.
Yeah, yeah.
Go ahead.
Di naintindihan ng masa 'yung branding. Ano naintindihan nila? Anong ginawa niyo para pumunta 'yung mga domestic tourism within that area, doon sa lugar na yan?
Uh, ano? Yeah, uh, yeah, good afternoon, uh.
Shalimar?
Yeah, uh Senator, yes. Uh, we opened a new um what is this uh online um marketing of our own. We also um beefed up our diving program, yeah.
Shalimar, waligaga dyan sagot mo eh. Forgive me, ah. Ako, sinasama ko, saliderado ko 'yung tao. Kung hindi ko tutuluan 'yung tao, kung anong gagawin, walang gagawin 'yan. Kung ikaw ay may hotel, may restaurant ka, ngayon, 'yung restaurant nung kasama ni uh Miss- Mrs. Batokawe, meron doon eh, 'yung sa party list nila. Ano pangalan ng Kongresman na kasama niyo na may asawa siya na Palestinean ata o Syrian na may magandang restaurant doon ng Arabo? Kumain kami doon eh.
Kong Garbin. Chairman si Kong Garbin.
Oo, yun si uh Congressman Garbin, oh, tama, Arbin, oh. At yun, dapat yun, ang pinopromote, anong ba ninyo mga kababayan dito sa kayong web page? Kaya niyang gawin yun eh, meron kaming Arabik food dito, ito, papakita namin sayo, masasarap. Ngayon, 'yung Regional Development Officer, irista niya 'yan ngayon, dadagdagan ngayon ng Tourism Promotion Board dyan para ipakalat sa buong Pilipinas at sa buong mundo na if you're ever in Albay, you can go to this fantastic and I, my God, I stuffed myself in that restaurant. Ang galing nung asawa ni Congressman Garbin. At pati nanay na doon. Yun ang sinasabi ko, maliliit na produkto na pag pinalaki niyo, dadamiya at dadamiyan. Kumbaga nung araw, dinala namin lahat 'yung mga domestic destinations. Uh, di ba, Agiger, doon sa Wow Philippines, sa Intramuros, dinadala natin 'yung hamon ng Sambuanga, may baker doon, ang galing-galing ng mga hamon niya. Dinadala natin 'yung mga lecian ng Cebu. Uh, dinadala natin 'yung sa Sambuanga, 'yung uh, ano tawag doon? 'Yung uh land crab. Ano tawag doon? 'Yung
Kuratya, kuratya.
Kuratya? Oh, nararama ngayon ang tao. Pag pumunta ka doon, alam mo ang bibilhin mo. Tama ba yun? Di ba? Hindi naman alam ang mga tao ko saka bibili doon eh. Anong pinakamagandang kuratya restaurant doon sa Sambuanga?
Alabarso, Alabar.
Alabar.
May Alabar sauce pa yan. Pag tumarating ako dyan, pinapabaho na ba ko ng sauce, no? Yun ang sinasabi ko, na 'yung wala ang tourism, pwede niyang gawin niya, Secretary Romulo, na 'yung maliliit na bayan na ganyan, na merong magandang kuwan, even within the province, 'yung karating po, naano doon sila, magkakilala sila, pag nag picnic sila, Family Day, pagpupromote, promotion lang yun eh. Family Day, putta kayo rito. O di kikita na kaga dyan, hindi naman antulong sa turismo. Bibigyan mo ng pera, 'yung nalugi, hindi lang yun eh. Dapat ibigay 'yung pera ng iyong, pagbabawi na sila. Pero ngayon, kung meron siyang program na ganun, oh ipromote niya kami, gagawin namin. Kaya may pakinabang si Shalimar, di ba Shalimar?
Uh, yes, uh, Senator.
Yun ang kailangan gawin mo, alright? O alin bawa, uh, uh, alam naman ninyo kung anong magagandang beaches? Halimbawa, may mga nakatagong beach sa Surigao, di ba? Di ba? O kaya, saan bang nakakapunta? Anong oras dumadating ang whale shark sa Sor Sogon? Oh, anong pinakamagandang araw? Bikol, sinong bikol? Region five. Herbie Aguas. Oh, sige. Anong-ano araw? Anong buwan? Dumadating ang mga whale shark sa dorsal. Naku po, nagkaroon na tayo ng problema. Oh, Herbie?
Yes, yes, nakamute po, sorry, sorry. Usually po, ano, um, summer siya. Summer and the lake.
Summer, ano? Summer ng Pilipinas. Wala tayong summer dito, panirene season na lahat ngayon.
Hehe, ano po, uh, usually po mga March, April, ganun po, March, April. And October then lumalabas din po siya, 'yung whale shark.
That's correct, October. Dinala ko 'yung America ng Bastard dyan. Ah, nagpakua kami, nung dinlagay namin dyan, dumabas 'yung Watch Our Whales.
Yes, po.
Pa doon. Watch Our Whales, but di mo gawin 'yan. Oh, September, October, maghanda na kayo. Oh, April, handa na kayo. Oh, sa Cebu, di ba may whale shark rin dyan?
Uh, meron, Senator, sa Oslo.
Sino Si- sino Cebu City? Sino?
Uh, Shalimar Tamano, Senator.
Oh, ikaw pa rin sa Cebu? Ang laki ng hawak mo.
Central, Central, Central Visayas, uh Senator, Cebu, Bohol, Negros Oriental, Siqueholt.
Saan maraming pateng? Dyan sa Cebu?
Sa Malapasko, uh, then, Senator.
Anong tawag sa pateng ngayon? Treasure?
Treasure sharks, yeah.
Oh, sa uh sa Bikol, ikaw, Mr. Aguas, bukod doon sa whale shark, saan marami nung mga pagi?
Ah, sa Masbate. Masbate po, Masbate.
Masbate? Tikaw Island?
Sa Tikaw, Tikaw Island. Maganda rin po 'yung nag-
Naandun ka na, correct?
Yes, po.
Oh, kuninuwa- tinuruan mo ba 'yung mga tiga-tikaw o 'yung sa Sor Sogon na mag-hapon? Ah, o mag- German o mag-Fre- mag-French yan, ganun, ang kinakabit niyo, 'yung training program niyo sa destination. Ay-ay- ayoko magturo ng ganito eh, dapat kayo 'yan eh. Kayo 'yan eh, 'yung mismong may hotel doon, lalabas niya, tutulungan niyo sa doon sa promotion. Ah, lalagyan niyo sa D O T, recommended sites even during the pandemic. You can go there and the carrying capacity of the following hotels are here. Make your reservations, we will tell you, when it is full. Pwede ba yun, Mr. Aguas?
Yes, po, yes, po.
Pwede ba yun, Mr. Hofer Tamano?
Yeah, yes, Senator, definitely.
Oh, yun ang tawag dyan, initiative. Kung wala kang initiative, purong inis ang aabutin mo sa amin. May inis kami sa inyo dahil hindi kayo nagpapakita ng gilas. Nagkakaintindihan ba tayo, mga kapit? Alam niyo, paborito-paborito nga 'yung D O T, kaya lang ay walang pa tayong nakikita na uh magic ng tourism. Yan ang number one. Wala tayong pabrika. Yan ang number one, tourism. Gamitin natin yan. Oh, shall I tell you more? Oh. Mr. Ortega, ano maganda bukod sa cooking, doon sa La Union? Can you speak a little louder and clearer, please?
Yes, sir.
San Fernando La Union sa Ilocos Sur.
Uh, yes, Mister Chair, so balipong ginagawa po namin right now, we have some products. Uh, we are developing the nature trails, uh, which is, uh, an outdoor, uh, mapping of, uh, our, uh, mountains. Well, uh, we also have, uh, product which is a bike tourism, where we are also mapping out, uh, potential bike trails. And, uh, this is in line po with your suggestion, uh, Mister Senator, uh, of domestic tourism, uh.
Andale Jeff, ah, dun ba sa bike tourism niyo, you expect the tourist at this time to bring his bike all the way there?
Uh, Mister Senator, actually, meron na pong, uh, existing market, uh, dito po sa region namin and, uh, in fact.
Existing market, ibig sabihin, napupunta na 'yung mga bikers dyan, 'yung sinasabi mo?
Yes, sir.
Ikaw, alin bawa, ayoko magdala ng bike. Magpapahiram ba ang Department of Tourism ng bike doon sa mga bike name dyan na may guide? Wala?
Uh, Mister Senator. Uh, Mister Senator, actually po, uh, we are still developing.
I'm asking you a question. Pagka nililigaw mo ako, alam ko hindi ka nasasabi. Wala ba kayong bisikleta ang mapapahiram na galing sa Sekretaryo na Department of Tourism, tama?
Sure, wala pa po, as of the moment, because.
You go to New York, you can borrow a bike, go to the next destination, leave the bike there, gagawin niyo. That is where initiative comes in. And that's where you promote, you give money to somebody, paingal mo 'yung bike, magpaopa siya, kikita na siya. Tama po ba 'yun? Kinuha ko lang 'yung idea niyo. Alright? Gaano kalayo ang San Juan, ang La Union? Anong pinakamalapit na bayan susunod?
Uh. Uh, San Fernando and La Union po, uh, San Fernando and San Juan.
Fernando Capital, Ilocos Sur, malapit na.
Yes, sir, sir. Around an hour or two po away.
An hour and two. Oh, go take a bike the whole day, go to Ilocos Sur and see what?
Uh, actually, ang, uh.
Sa Ilocos Sur?
Uh, Mister Senator, vegan po, uh, and, uh, the food, uh, that we find around the streets is vegan, Mister Senator.
Ah, sarap 'yung vegan food?
Yes, sir.
Hindi vegan, ah, vegan, hindi 'yung vegan, right? Di ba dapat, eto 'yung mga restaurant na pwede niyang puntahan, tama?
Yes, Mister Senator.
Anong ba kayong ganun? Wala pa po. Nung una ako nag-tourism sekretary, lahat, hindi ako pa nang mamagalin sa inyo. Ilang, isang linggo naming ginagawa, 'yung mga little packages na pwede niyang itinda. At tulungan 'yung mga tourist destinations para may laban. And then papapasukin ngayon na Secretary Romulo. 'Yung mga tao, oh, eto ang carrying capacity in itong restaurant neto, itong carrying capacity, make reservations. Maga-invest kayo sa central reservation system na kayo lang ang may hawa. Na lahat siya nakakabit sa inyo. Pwede pa ba kayo dyan? Pwede po, oh, sige, tungo ka dyan. Pero kayo lalampas. Eto ang guidelines. Paggagali ka sa ibang lugar na maraming COVID, wag na kayo magapply. Hindi namin kayo tatanggapin. Pwede ba 'yun? You look like an intelligent young man, Jeff.
Yes, sir, Mister Senator. Uh, we actually have that po in, uh, Region One po. And, uh, our dear secretary po, uh, actually directed us to spend seventy percent of our budget for product development, Mister Senator. That's why we're very happy that, uh, we developed this bike tourism. Uh, we are currently training palang po community tour guides. Uh, we are, uh, looking to launch this po, uh, towards the end of the year.
I don't, I, I, I don't mind you bragging, you have bragging rights. I don't mind you protecting your secretary. She doesn't need protection. We're just helping here. All I'm just suggesting is, wala pa kayo, sinabi ko sa'yo, wala kang bisikleta eh. Hindi mo sinasama 'yung Ilocos Sur, Regional Director ka eh. Kwidadadin mo pa sa Ilocos Norte, you can go to the Junes, you can go to Pawai. You can go to, uh, uh, Sarat, you can go to all these old churches, correct?
Uh, yes, Mister Senator, indeed po lahat.
Three hours away from each other or four hours away from each other, you can go from one place. Using your bike, you can go. Ang sinasabi ko lang, I'm already belaboring what I've said and I didn't want to do that. Is dapat kada region, meron kayong packages. I think the secretary is smart enough, and I know she is, to start asking the different regional directors. To come out with your programs that you can promote and that you can put into a central country. And only provincial.
Huh?
National.
Huh? Ay, nakimiting.
Shalimar, I cannot listen to you. You want me to stop while you can talk? I think you can do that, Mister Senator. Di ba Madam Secretary? I hope you don't mind. I'm not trying to put you down. I'm just trying to support you.
Yes, Senator, we can submit to you the various tourism circuits we've been doing with all the regions.
I'm sure you do. But I, but you know, in this question and answer between Senators and you, we don't want to go to the numbers. You'll get caught, uh, into, uh, difficult situations that may not have been your doing. But in this particular case, what we want to make sure is that the money that is not being spent properly. Will be spent for all these things, di ba? Madapat sasabihin ni Mister Aguas, eto ang aking best of the regions, oh. Ayan, nakalagay oh, Region One, Ilocos Region. Slow food. Saan ba kami kakain dyan? Sa slow food? Saan? Saan restaurants? Ah? Atan telepono? Anong email? Anong website?
We could submit it, um, Senator.
That is why you have to try hard then.
Actually included, no, it's actually included, we will submit it, uh, to your office. Including all the restaurants to go to, all the places to go to.
All I ask is gawin niyo, pakita niyo sa buong mundo 'yan, sa buong Pilipinas. And I bet you pupunta ang tao. Hindi naman ako nagpapayabang sa inyo o nagpapagaling sa inyo. Ano sinasabi ko, when you come here, you have to know how to market yourselves. You know, I could ask you difficult questions and you would be embarrassed. I don't wanna do that. I want you to have that enthusiasm. Uy, nasagot ko 'yung tanong. Uy, okay ah, pero pala kaming rito, oh. Eh, wala eh. Kaya nagahanap 'yung mga kasama ko ng mga tanong. Na obag di niya nagastos to, bat hindi mo alam. Ayoko sa pisay niyo 'yun. Alright? Any other questions from our secretary or from our senators or? So, in, 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 uh, conclusion. Secretary Romulo.
Yes, sir.
What do you want me to tell the Senate? When your budget comes in, what is your game plan to get out of this pandemic? Or while the pandemic is going on? And what is your game plan way ahead for domestic tourism, for international tourism? That is what you give it to me, you give it to me, and I will defend your budget. I will defend. Your budget, I'll defend the Department of Tourism. Because there's nothing to offend. There's only something that we can be proud of. That's all I'm asking.
Yes, Senator.
Alright? On that note, I still have another hearing for the SBMA. You know, even.
Chairman?
Yes.
Just for submission, Mister Chairman.
Yes.
Can they submit to the committee the sixteen billion, um, tripsy projects under the DPWH?
The infrastructure project, you mean?
Um, the, Mister Chairman, kasi di ba meron 'yung Road Infrastructure Pro- Program?
Tatanong ako.
Under DPWH. They can submit, kasi di ba itemized na secretary?
Yes, yes, Senator, we will submit it to your office.
Okay, thank you. No, to the committee.
To the committee.
Nagkakaroon ng mga magic projects, hindi natin alam ba kayo na lumabas dyan eh, di ba? Nagkukominggil 'yung, uh, Infrastructure Development Plan ng DPWH. Nanulusutan tayo ng mga special na may mga malalakas, di ba? Eh, ayaw na bang naman magimbestiga eh, pero paglalabas sa ganyan, mag-iimbestiga pa tayo. Ayoko na magimbestiga. Alam niyo ba, masarap? Okay? Tama 'yun, napakisubmit lang 'yun. Sekretary, uh, Buoyad?
Yes, Senator. Mumingirin ako nalistahan sa iba para lang malaman natin at, uh, maipagtanggol. Thank you, Mister Chairman.
Yes, ma'am, okay. I'd like to thank the two ladies. You, you keep me on my toes. You are able to see what I don't see, and I'm happy that we're all working together here. And I think my sug- my suggestion lang to the department is you talk to one another, be a team. And you know, hindi naman mahirap magawa dyan eh, ang ganda-ganda 'yan, masaya 'yung trabaho niyo dyan eh. You should all be happy. And so, uh, uh, at this point, uh.
Mister Chairman, pwede din ako magpasalamat kay Senator Sherwin for allowing Senator Amy and me to. Keep asking questions.
Inayan na ganda, para sabihin mo 'yan. Iniintay ko sabihin na naman ni Sherwin, hindi mo ako pinapansin eh. Andyan ka ba ba Sherwin? Are you there? Senator Sherwin? Pag sinabi. Are you there?
Ito pa, Chairman, bakit nagnation like, uh, tourism, uh, tour ako?
You have any more questions, Senator Sherwin?
Yes, one last, uh, uh, question, uh. Uh, Mister Chairman, and this is, uh, in regards to, um. The, uh, facilities, though, that were, uh, affected. Uh, in my going around the country. Uh, I, I, so a lot of hotels, a lot of facilities closed down. Uh, for example, here Manila, Bacati Shangela, in Davao, there's some. So I just want to ask the secretary, how many hotels closed down, uh, during the time of pandemic? And, uh, I just want to get a, a picture of that.
Yes, Senator, yes. The one that publicly said.
That is a very good question. I'm glad that you reminded us.
The one that publicly said that they were closing, temporary closing, was Marco Polo in Davao. And, uh, Makati Shangela. In NCR, a lot of them have re, have changed into quarantine facilities. They're open, but they have shifted to quarantine facilities. The same with in Cebu.
With the permission of Sen- uh, Senator Gachalian.
Chairman.
So, kumikita 'yung mga hotel na nagsara, di ba? Kumikita pa rin sila dahil binabayaran ng gobyerno para sa mga OFW, 'yung tumitara doon. Tama po ba 'yun? O kaya naman 'yung mga private na magpapaquarantine, kumikita rin sila dahil binabayaran nila. Ano ba ang budget doon, ma'am? Four thousand per room? Five thousand per room?
Um, that's with the OWA, it's not with us.
No, but I think you should care about it, don't you think so?
Um, no, because it's the private sector, sometimes they charge iba-iba po eh. Kung, uh, five-star hotel, four-star hotel. But with regard to, kung 'yung OWA, I'm not quite sure how much they pay for the OFWs. And then with returning OFs, kanya-kanya po 'yung charge ng mga private hotels.
So, meron ring natutulong ang gobyerno dahil binabayaran natin 'yung mga hotel. Tama po ba 'yun?
Yes, sir.
Sige, tama. There are always points for the good guys. Yes, Sir, uh, Senator Sherwin, go ahead.
Ato tayo, my point, Chairman, is, um, these facilities, uh. First question is, kung ilan po 'yung nagsara? Um, and then, my second question is, uh, are, are. The hotels that are operating right now, uh, are they operating, uh, as quarantine facilities? I just want to get a picture of that, though, because. I, I've heard that a lot of hotels, not the branded ones, no secretary, but the less. Letter known, the local brands, have shut down temporarily because of the pandemic. And, uh, my next question there is, at least the quarantine facilities, they not making money. But they can, they can pay salaries and electricity. The quarantine facility, the quarantine, uh. State is that, uh, the rates are not so high, sabi ni Chairman, four thousand, five thousand. Uh, baka less pa. So, at least, we have employment. And we have less shutdowns, so, because startups are very expensive. So, I just want to get a picture of how many, how many hotels have closed down other than the brandings?
Alright, let me ask all the regional, uh, folks there to submit the hotels that have closed down. And the hotels that are being used for quarantine. Woodrow of NCR. I'm sure you know that, right, Woodrow? A good regional director should know what his market is, to know who to protect. Woodrow, are you there?
Yes, sir, I'm, I'm here. Good afternoon. Well, in the port of NCR, sir, we're a bit lucky because, uh, as a gateway of all this returning overseas Filipinos. Malik violence and some foreigners, like, oh, we have already reached one point four million since the lockdown, sir. That we have assisted here in that. One point four million passengers that, uh, passed through the, um, na Iya. And normally the.
Question, Woodrow, is how many hotels, and please pay respects to Secretary, Senator Gachalian. How many, to his question anyway? How many hotels have closed down? Five-star, four-star, three-star, two-star, one-star? Alam ko marami ring motel ginagawa, di ba? Ginagamit na niya.
Yes, sir.
Marami rin nagkukplay sa aking mga tao, bat daming kami din nalugi dito? Ah, may ganun, ayoko nasabihin pa 'yung mga sinasabi nila. Pero, at least nga, sabi ni Senator Gachalian, sabi ko rin. May nababayan doon sa mga empleyado, kahit na paano, kahit na nagre-do sila na employees, meron pa rin mababayaran. At kung may utang, meron pa rin matatabi ang pera dahil tuloy-tuloy ang hundred percent ocupasya, baguhat mabama. Sa, sa mga kagaya ni Senator Gachalian, nasa na 'yung sa mga five-star hotel. Uh, 'yung mga five-star, diba, Senator Sherwin, kaya-kaya?
Kaya po, three-star, five-star po, Chairman, three-star.
Uh, you might want to start with Senator Gachalian's hotel. Bukas ba 'yung hotel ninyo, Sherwin, Senator Sherwin?
Uh, it's still operating, Chairman, but, uh, as Secretary mentioned. Uh, majority of our clients are, uh, the OFWs and it became a quarantine hotel, basically. Almost seventy percent. So, the lesson there is, it's not making money, definitely because of the low rates. But at least enough to pay the salaries.
Right.
So, it means money.
So, Woodrow, how many hotels are there in Metro Manila? Give us that information. How many hotels in the different classification? How many are closed? How many are operating as quarantine centers? And please submit it right away because I'm going to have to, uh, tell them how hard a work here, how hard a worker you are. Actually, I expected you to be able to say, sir, there are four hundred hotels in Manila or five hundred hotels with so many bed capacity. So many employees, dapat nasa tip of your fingers 'yan.
Yes, sir, yes, sir, if I may, sir. We have around six hundred hotels operating now in.
Around, ilan exacto? Anybody? Around?
It's five hundred ninety-eight, sir, with sixty-six, with sixty-four thousand, uh, rooms, uh, operating now. Mostly on quarantine facilities, uh, your honor, and, um.
Sixty-four thousand rooms?
Yes, 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 your honor. We are.
Sixty-four thousand divided by.
That's, that's. That's correct, sir. Um, from ranges from motels, uh, Mabuhay Accommodations, Apartment Hotels, to one-star to five-star hotels. These are all being utilized as either multiple-use hotels, quarantine hotels, and some are isolation hotels, your honor. Being used for positive patients already here in, uh, by the communities in Metro Manila. So, um, basically. We are trying to, that's why before, sir, during the lockdown, they closed, but we really, we really pushed for them to open. So that we can accommodate all these requirements for all the quarantine, isolation, and multiple uses, uh, here in Metro Manila, your honor.
Alright, thank you, thank you, Woodrow.
Thank you, sir.
My last question to the secretary is, secretary, we have four point seven million, uh, workers in the tourism sector. How many have been vaccinated?
Um, we're, right now, according to the list given by the regions, we've already vaccinated. The active tourism workers, huh? Kasi some are not, um, going to work, we vaccinated fifty-one percent.
Fifty-one percent of what, Secretary?
Of, um, the active tourism workers in Luzon Visayas and Mindanao, all the regions. But when you talk of active tourism workers, the ones, uh, going to, going to work, kasi some, um, are not working.
And how many total workers are there?
Um, for two thousand twenty.
Five point seven million?
Of two thousand nineteen, it was five point seven million people.
Yeah? Five point seven million people.
Seven million, two thousand nineteen.
In two thousand nineteen, yes, okay, thank you.
Is there any initiative to vaccinate the balance of, uh, forty-nine percent?
Yes, we are. We are currently doing it. We are currently vaccinating all our tourism workers. Yes, Senator.
What is your forecast? When do you, when do you, uh, when do you, uh?
We hope by before Christmas, we'll be able to vaccinate all the active tourism workers, a hundred percent.
Thank you, Secretary. And I want to commend the DOT, uh, Davao, because we have a partnership there. Uh, waterfront and, um, the tourism sector, uh, both, uh. Launched this partnership of vaccinating, uh, tourism workers. And, uh, when I visited, uh, they told me that ninety percent of the tourism workers in Davao City. Have been vaccinated already, so that's a very good model that, uh, hopefully we can spread throughout the regions, no? A PPP, a private public partnership. Uh, total, wala naman talagang gumagamit, uh, dito sa mga facilities. Turn it into a vaccination center focused on, uh, tourism, uh, workers. And ninety percent is quite, uh, impressive, huh? Uh, it's a, that's where the, uh, sabi ni Chairman, that's where the, uh, balloon slash bubble can happen. Because, uh, at least, so, 'yung mga hotels can accept, because they're fully vaccinated, they can accept fully vaccinated flyers. So, I commend the, uh, uh, the department, especially the, uh. Uh, the, uh, DOT Davao City for that initiative.
Yes.
Thank you, Chairman.
Senator Sherwin, thank you for lending us the Bakuna by the Sea. In fact, that because of your Bakuna by the Sea with RD Tanya, of course Mayor Indai. Um, that was where we patterned off our, all the other regions, all the other tourist destinations. Um, that's why we also had the Bakuna by the Sea in Boracay, we've vaccinated seventy-three percent. In NCR alone, uh, Senator Gachalian, ninety-nine percent have already been vaccinated. That's why Pinayagan na ang dine-in, because all the employees in the hotels are vaccinated. So, kaya Pinayagan, and that's what we plan to do po, we, and tomorrow, we're going to Cebu. To also do, to vaccinate also the tourism workers there. And to send it also for the Bakuna by the Sea, yes.
That's a good model, it's a good private public model. And it seems like it's effective because it's a dedicated center for tourism workers. So, wala sa pinapakunaan to the tourism workers. Congratulations to that.
RD Tanya, di ba? That was, yeah. That's under RD Tanya Rabat.
Thank you po, um, Senator Sherwin, uh, for the, the support given to all our, um, tourism workers. If to include Samal po.
There any more questions? Yung bang Bakuna by the Sea, Senator Sherwin, meron bang Gachalian lecian niyo? Saman?
Ah, wala, eh, kasi, ah, I love Chairman, so, ato lang, sandwich lang, sandwich, sandwich lang. Ah, wala po, eto si High Blood, Chairman, so, eto lang, salit sila, salit, salit sila.
Huwag po sabihin niyo, kahit di nabubili na lecion, na High Blood. Thank you, thank you, Senator Sherwin, thank you. Uh, adala mo na lang kay Senator Villanueva, 'yung, uh, 'yung lecion mo? Anyway, uh, are there any more questions for my colleagues here? Senator Nansky?
Lalo po, Mr. Chairman, alam ko ba isa pa kayong budget hearing.
Alright, tatlo pa nga eh. Uh, the chair will now entertain any motion to, uh, uh, to, uh, have the budget of tourism brought to primary, uh, plenary?
Mr. Chairman, may I move therefore that having heard the budget of the, uh, Department of Tourism as well as its attached agencies at the subcommittee level, that we endorse it to the mother committee, pending the submission of required information and other documents, and thereafter to plenary, Mr. Chairman?
Second, Chairman, second.
Seconded by both Nasa Beena, Senator Beena, and Senator Gachalian, I met, I said the ladies first, alright? And, uh, having said that, uh, the budget of the DOT is suspended uh, in accordance with, uh, prior to, uh, in other words, uh, remember that you have to submit all the documents that we asked, including the number of hotels, et cetera, et cetera, and many more. So kindly do that, uh, and, uh, uh, I'd like to commend everybody, you know, uh, I know you all are working hard and we're trying to look very, very, uh, you know, uh, correct and formal here, it's only because we want to make sure that we protect the people of this country, many of the people of this country, uh, so that, uh, uh, they will continue to repose confidence upon all of you folks. Thank you, Secretary Verna, uh, and, uh, thank you all other secretaries. Uh, I'm happy to meet all of you and the regional directors. Uh, let's make, let's, uh, bring, uh, the wow back in tourism, alright? Thank you very much and mabuhay kayo lahat, God bless you. This session.
Thank you very much, Senator.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Senator, thank you.